And we look forward to departments helping us understand what services were offered in the prior period and what it will take for them to continue to provide that same service level in the upcoming budget, in the upcoming budget. What I would ask is that after each presentation, I will look to each of my fellow city council members to comment or provide us with some insight based on, you know, the research and the experience that you've had on where we can perhaps fine tune or make suggestions to city staff on the presentation and on the, you know, on the numbers that they are presenting today, bearing in mind that we will be creating a vision, meaning that we will be defining a service level within each department so that city staff can then execute that vision. So with that, I would ask Helena to please begin the presentation.
Good morning, Mayor, City Council, Helena Alves, your Finance Director. Our finance team here today to present to you fund accounting and revenue restrictions. So I will let Gwen get started with the presentation.
Good, and I'm going to ask everyone, city council members as well, please just adjust your microphones so that they are close so that those that may be listening online are able to hear. That's, we get some comments sometimes, it's difficult for people outside of the room to, to hear us.
Good morning, Mayor and Council, Gwen Ragsdale, your Budget Procurement Manager. So we will not go over the timeline in detail this morning, however, as you can see, we were asked here on April 26th to review year-to-year-to-date budget results. Today, we will cover fund accounting and revenue restrictions. You will hear from Parks and Recreation, Utility, Public Works, and Stormwater Departments later this morning for departmental overviews. We will come back to Council in June with a presentation on property tax. In the months of July and August, we will hold multiple budget presentations where you will have the opportunity to review the budget details as we move, we move through the process with adoption in September. So fund accounting. Fund accounting is a system for segregating financial resources to ensure and demonstrate legal compliance with restrictions or other special purposes. What is a fund? The easiest way to explain is that each fund represents its own checkbook. The city has 20 separate funds or checkbooks that are subject to specific regulations and are segregated based on their purpose. The specific purpose is generally tied to restricted revenues that can only be used for a specific purpose and must be accounted for separately and not used for general operations. So the city has two categories of funds, governmental and proprietary. Governmental funds are primarily supported by taxes and include the general fund, special revenue funds, and capital project funds. We will cover the restrictions later on in this presentation for each major category, but the easiest way to relate to governmental funds is that the correlation between the tax and the usage may not be direct. A good example is the fire department. The residents don't get charged for call. The ad valorem taxes cover the service that is available to all residents. Proprietary funds are different, where the user is charged a fee directly related to their service. A good example is the water and wastewater utility, where the resident pays for their individual water usage. Proprietary funds also include internal service funds, where we account for internal operations that benefit both governmental and proprietary funds. A good example is the IT operations. They service the whole city and their fees are allocated accordingly. The departments that are supported in these funds are governmental includes the administration and finance, the fire department, the contract with the sheriff's county, the Flagler County Sheriff's Office for Incan Services, the Community Development Division excluding the business building department, as well as streets maintenance along with parks and recreation. Proprietary includes water and wastewater, utilities, stormwater management, building permits, information technology, enterprise and operations, collection and sanitation, fleet maintenance, and facilities maintenance. At our last budget presentation, Council asked for revenue comparisons with two other municipalities. We did our research and as you can see, charges for services appear to account for the largest slices of revenue, followed by ad valorem taxes. These are very high level since all the communities are different with various tax bases and population numbers. We will now move to fund balance. So fund balance is simply the excess revenues over expenditures. We are very fortunate here at the city of Palm Coast that we have a very solid fund balance policy that has been approved by a city council. The usage is for emergencies or one-time expenditures, not meant to fund continuous operations. We have policies for the general fund, water and wastewater utility, stormwater, collections and sanitation, disaster reserve fund, and the fleet fund. Contingency reserves are the appropriations of funds to cover unforeseen events, unexpected costs, fluctuations in revenues, and expenditures and emergencies. Fund balance appropriations represent fund balance carryovers used as a funding source. For example, carryovers in the capital projects fund are used to fund future projects. This is a look at our major operational fund balance policy. These are not all of our funds, but these are the more significant from an operational standpoint. The general fund, utility fund, and stormwater policy states that we should have a balance of 10 to 20% of the following year's budgeted expenses. For fleet, the minimum is the total expected fleet replacement cost divided by the average life. The chart also goes over the policy if the balance is over 20% and if it falls under 10%. As the last audited fiscal year 2022, all funds were in compliance or exceeded the fund balance policy. As we move forward with the budget preparations, we will analyze the balances and incorporate any usage according for Council's consideration. Helena will now cover the revenue restrictions portion of the presentation.
So we will start with the main special revenue funds restricted revenues, local option fuel tax. The city receives six cents per gallon of fuel purchased in Flagler County. It is distributed by inter-local agreement and is based on an average of road miles and population. The calculation is adjusted annually in July and the current rate allocated to the city is approximately 73%. This revenue is restricted to transportation expenditures. Carl Cody did an extensive presentation to Council on the deficiency of revenues available and the need of the pavement program. This is a revenue source that remains relatively flat over the years, but the expenditures costs have continued to increase. The next restricted special revenue is a portion of the state revenue sharing. So the state requires 22.64 to be allocated for transportation expenditures. The city currently allocates 45% to the streets improvement fund. This, this increase in allocation was done a few years back, I want to say three years ago, to help with the deficit in the pavement program. Another major restricted special revenue is the State Road 100 Community Redevelopment Agency. The revenues received from property tax in that area are restricted for the redevelopment within the CRA.
Helena, this is a workshop, if I may, before we get too far. So in the 73% that shows up under street improvement fuel tax, so you state that that is adjusted annually, and I'm just questioning with the, with the growth in population, do you expect that to have a significant change in the coming budget cycle?
Even if there was a change in the percentage, because it's only six cents per gallon sold, it will not significantly increase the revenue.
So the magnitude of the revenue is not, is not big bucks, okay?
I also have a question. We're collecting six cents per gallon on gas. Are we collecting anything from electric vehicles presently?
No.
I mean, they're using our roads, and I think that's something we need to take a look at. I don't know quite how we do it, maybe it's a mileage thing. You report your mileage annually or something, and we figure out a formula that would be equal to that six cents per gallon, but we have roads that are turning, really becoming a problem, and we have a bunch of electrical vehicles that put wear and tear on those roads, and we haven't collected a penny on that. And I think that's something we may need to look at, because, you know, no pun intended, but they shouldn't get a free ride.
The, the local option fuel tax is dictated at the highest level from the state?
So it is a revenue that is available to local governments, and the Boardy County Commissioners would have been the one to adopt the local option.
So to the Vice, to the Vice Mayor's point, I agree with you. I think that this would be an appropriate time to talk to both our, our speaker and our Senator, because I know that Tallahassee is dealing with the issue. I do believe that the, the structure for the revenue sharing has to start from Tallahassee, and then we can massage it here locally, but I would be willing to work together to make that point, because I agree.
Yeah, I mean, there's been a big push for these vehicles.
Well, to put it in place now for the future makes perfect sense, but I do believe that there will be a requirement that we work together with Tallahassee on this, but good point.
Is this not something we can do locally? I know our Council's not here today, but...
My underst, Helena, can you answer? I don't want to speak. My understanding is that that's not a tax that we can unilaterally impose. Do you know better?
I am not aware that we are allowed.
Hold that question, because I, I, I'm not, yeah, I'd like to have Council answer that for us so we're sure.
As more and more of these vehicles get on the road, you know, it's, it's time that we say, hey, we're paying this tax on our fuel, you guys aren't paying anything, it's not right.
Right.
Excuse me, if I may just chime in. Helena, we had spoken previously about adding a service charge to electric charging stations and working with private companies that have them on their properties as they develop. Has that gone anywhere? Do you have an update as to that research and what we can do? Because this specifically, to your point, Vice Mayor, has been a concern of mine for several months. And are we getting there?
City manager can answer that. I believe there's a presentation coming to Council soon.
That's right, Elena. I believe it's on June 13th, our light team will bring a presentation. It's going to be a milestone presentation. We may not have those answers at that time, but our chief sustainability and resiliency officer is taking, basically batoning off that question, and we'll give you an answer.
And to Vice Mayor's point, just to, to add to that, looking to the electric charging station may be an even broader approach to revenue, because if we were to tax residents who drive electric vehicles, we would only capture our own folks. It would be good for those that are traversing through our area to catch them if they're charging here as well. So what I'm thinking is, another question for Council is going to be, is there some form of a surcharge? I don't know if that's the correct term, to place on either the installation or perhaps the usage of the charging stations, because I do know that there will be many more charging stations coming online. So it's, it's a subject that, that we may want to discuss in detail with all of those various elements.
But keep in mind, a lot of people charge at home.
Yep.
So I think we still need to account for the use of, on our roads, because we need every penny we can get at this point.
No, of course, absolutely agree. I think we all agree with that. Good.
Well, and I, I think that there's, I mean, there's a way to kind of capture monies from people charging at home as well. So I think the, the more that we can take advantage of people coming through.
I think both. I think we need, it needs to be a one-two sort of situation.
And this would be also a good time to roll FPL into the equation in our discussion, because they're benefiting from this, and since we're supplying the residents and the cars and the, the houses where those vehicles are charged, why shouldn't FPL be a part of the revenue process for us? Just another question.
Works.
Yeah, okay.
But are we also, just on the subject, are we still providing free charges out in our parking lot?
Yes, we are, but on June 13th, we're going to be sharing some options to City Council on this, have we studied it? You may not know this background, but it was established as a pilot program to see what kind of users would be attracted to City Hall, and it's a common practice in government currently today.
But this is something we're planning on changing?
June 13th, yes, sir. You'll get a presentation.
Park slots in those things or something?
It's, it's, quarters. June 13th, you'll see those options, and we'll seek guidance from City Council.
Okay, so we're, we're all agreed that we will discuss this in much more detail. And Helena, I would ask this, when you can, would you figure out for us what the forecast is to lose revenue because of less gas sales in favor of more electric sales? In other words, we're doing this to add revenue, but also to replace revenue lost because people are not buying gas? So I'm sure that there's some state, there's some state, there's some state numbers that you could provide for us. Thank you. Sorry to interrupt, but go ahead, please.
And I just want to thank staff for staying on top of this, because I know this is something that I had asked for, and I just appreciate the fact that it was followed through on. So thank you.
Of course. So, I have to find where it was. Okay, we will now move to our capital funds restricted revenues. We will start with the small county surtax. This was enacted by Flagler County in 2012 and is set to expire in 2032. This represents half a percent of the 7% sales tax collected in Flagler County. It is allocated to the different districts using a state formula. It is committed by Council to the construction and improvement of public facilities. This revenue is accounted for in the capital projects fund and is currently being allocated mainly to the design and construction of the maintenance operation complex. Our next category of restricted capital revenues is impact fees. The city currently collects impact fees for transportation, water and wastewater, recreation, and fire. These revenues are restricted for growth-related projects. They can only be used when we are adding new capacity, and they cannot be used for existing system deficiencies or to fund any type of operations.
Is that a, is that a state law?
That is a state law, yes.
And Helena, the half, half percent of the seven is defined by inter-local agreement?
So it was enacted by the county and is distributed based on the state formula, not based on an interlocal.
But the half, the half itself?
The half itself is...
What's the history of the half? Why is it not 1%?
It was only adopted as...
But who, what I'm asking is...
The county is allowed to go up to 1%, yes, by state.
All right, so help me with this. So what's our share?
At 2022 was a little over 3.8 million.
But of the half a percent, what percentage?
It's about 50%.
I'm sorry?
It's about 50%.
About 50%?
Yes.
So here's my question again. So that was adopted some time ago.
2012.
So the demographics and the population has changed significantly since then. So my question is, are we still getting our fair share? Only because, you know, those numbers tend to stick around for a long time, and I would like to revisit them.
So now we will move on to enterprise fund restrictions. Our main enterprise funds are water, wastewater, stormwater management, and the building permits fund. The water and wastewater along with stormwater revenues, the revenues generated are to be used to maintain the system as well as that service requirement. And the building permits fund, any revenues are used to maintain the permitting and building So we couldn't look at restricted revenues without looking at unrestricted revenues. So now we're going to do major sources that are currently in use. These are just the major sources. There's other unrestricted revenues that we have in use. So the ad valorem is the main revenue source for the general fund. It is based on taxable value of property. Council has adopted a millage rate of 4.61. The property tax process is governed by TRIM, Truth and Millage, and it establishes strict guidelines for local governments to follow. We have a presentation coming to Council on June 13th that focuses just on the TRIM and property tax. As a reminder, the property appraiser's office releases the preliminary taxable values to the municipalities on June 1st, and then the certified values a month later on July 1st. So by the time we come to your June 13th, we'll have the preliminary values, and we'll be able to share that with Council. The communication services tax is 5.22%. It is applied to telecommunications. It encompasses voice, data, audio, video, or any other information or signals transmitted by any medium. Historically, this revenue has remained flat with minor growth. The other unrestricted half-cent tax is a portion of the 6% sales tax collected in Flagler County that comes back to us from the Department of Revenue. And we also have the state revenue sharing, which is a combination of different taxes that get turned over from the state to the municipalities.
So I guess my question is, your comment about the communications and services tax is that it's remained relatively flat over some period of time. So if our population has increased by 15 or 20%, why has that communications tax not also enjoyed a similar growth?
Because it's seen an offset decrease in cable bundles and home lines as we move to just cell phones and streaming for communications. It kind of balances it out.
So you're basically saying people that are cutting their cables?
Yes.
Cable cords, we're losing that share?
Absolutely.
As they move on to something else on the internet or whatever?
Yep.
Streaming.
Absolutely.
And I have a question, and this might be something to maybe ask our lobbyists. Is there anything in Tallahassee going on currently legislatively to help to offset these types of things as people are going to more streaming? I mean, I'm a fan of capitalism and people saving money any way they can in their pockets, but is there, that you're aware of, is there anything going on in Tallahassee that helps us capture this revenue?
Not that I'm aware of, but that might be...
Put that on the list for our meeting with our, well, we can either invite our Senator or our Speaker here, or we can individually speak to them to find out why that is not a conversation, because, I mean, it makes perfect sense.
And it might be, I'm just not aware. So we will now move to unrestricted revenue sources that are available to Council but are not being used by the city of Palm Coast. As you can see, there are two available to the city, the electric franchise fee and the public service tax, and we will review them in a little bit more detail in the next slide.
The last time we tried that, it didn't go over too well, did it?
No, this was presented to...
2018?
That is correct.
And the, the history behind that was that the objection by City Council at that time was that the requirement is a 30-year commitment, if I'm not mistaken, and there was an objection to the length of time that you would have to commit to not use a competitive provider of the service that was discussed. The interesting point about the, about this is that every city and every municipality and every county within shouting range of, of here has been using this for a long time and benefiting from it. Now, that's, I'm not suggesting that this is something that we want to do, but just to make you aware of the facts, it's been in play with the entire region for a long time. But we should probably each understand what the, the pluses and the minuses are, because at the end of the day, Vice Mayor, you're right, it's a tax, and it will show up on people's bills, and they will have to pay it.
I just want to state right here...
No, no, I, I, that's why I'm bringing it up.
I am unequivocally opposed to this.
But we should still under...
And I won't even consider it. I just, that's me. I'm stating...
And I appreciate the comment, but I would ask you all to at least understand it, not suggesting you support it, but at least be knowledgeable and intelligent about it.
Tax, I understand it.
Well, I'm not sure you understand all the details underlying it, and also what the competition in the area is for. Understanding it better may show us a way to negotiate with FPL. In other words, I'm unwilling, I'm unwilling to upfront say no before I understand something.
If some of our citizens want to move to a neighboring community and pay more taxes, they are welcome to.
Okay, let's go, let's proceed.
So the electric franchise fee is an agreement between the municipality and the electric provider, in our case, Florida Power and Light, essentially for the use of the cities right of way. It is calculated as a percentage of gross revenues, and the maximum rate allowed is 6%. The usage or purpose can be determined by City Council. In our case, it would represent approximately $5.75 million annually.
Helena, where would these monies, what fund would these monies, if, if this were an extra revenue, where would these go?
So these are unrestricted revenues, so the usage will be determined by City Council.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. So the municipal public service tax is revenue available to municipalities that levy a tax on the purchase of electricity, gas, or water service. The maximum rate is 10%. The statute provides for several mandatory exemptions, such as a fuel adjustment charge as well as exempting certain industries. The statute also provides for several discretionary exemptions, such as an option of exempting the tax imposed in any amount up to and including the first 500 kilowatts, sorry, of usage, as well as certain industry exemptions. The usage and purpose can be determined by City Council, and in our case, it would represent approximately $7.4 million annually. In the state of Florida, there are 35% of municipalities that charge both a public service tax and an electric franchise fee. 53% charge one or the other, and then 12% that do not have any tax or fee. As you can see, the state map shows the locations in a little bit more detail.
And just another really quick question, the public service tax, is that based on usage, whereas the franchise fee would not be based on usage? Is that correct?
They are both based on usage. Now, with your public service tax, there are certain exemptions that are mandatory, whereas with the franchise fee, it's of the total revenue, like a total bill, basically, gross revenues for the utility.
So I just want to make sure when we're looking at these, these are based on individual, each individual's usage of whatever that is?
That is correct.
That's correct?
Yep, that is correct. This chart here is a millage rate comparison for Florida cities that have a population between 80,000 to 110,000 people. The information for this came from two websites, the Florida Department of Revenue and the Office of Economic and Demographic Research. So there are currently 16 Florida cities that fall under, into this population range. Of those 16, Palm Coast does have the lowest millage rate. Of course, this is not apple-to-apples comparison, as we don't have details about these communities and the services that they offer. We would like to remind the public where they can find all of our budget information. As in previous years, we have set up the fiscal year 2024 budget preparation link on the city's website. This is where we will post all of our presentations, budget calendar, and any supporting documentation as we move forward through the budget process.
So Helena, if you'll go back one slide.
Sure.
I mean, it's astounding to me that we can rank as low as we do in millage without the benefit of the last two columns. So I just want you to highlight that, that we have been able to provide the service level that we do without using revenue from either of those two obviously very popular sources of revenue. That's quite spectacular.
Yep.
Okay.
You are correct.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. That completes our presentation, and we'll take some questions from Council.
I just have one. Our contingency reserve, how much do we presently have in it?
So for the general fund, as you recall, when your external auditors were here in March 21st, James Moore and Company, they stated that the general fund was at 36% of next year's expenditures.
Right, but how much money is that?
That is approximately 18 million.
I'm sorry, eight or 18?
18.
18 million?
Yes, that is correct.
Vice Mayor, the other, I agree with the, the question's a good one. The other way to look at it maybe is also, so in terms of a catastrophic effect, that would keep us in business, according to today's operational expense, for how long?
So I don't have an answer to that, but I do have that the GFOA recommends our floor... So I don't have an answer to that, but I do have that the GFOA recommends our floor to, our floor minimum to be at least 16%. The auditors recommended that we increase our maximum to 25%, which would be about 90 days' worth of.
About 90 days. So catastrophic, there's nobody, there's no lifeline from the feds or from the state. So we're able to continue to provide all of our essential services for 90 days. That's, that's the guideline.
That was basically their guideline for operations side, not necessarily for the disaster reserve. So the disaster reserve is accounted for separately.
Separately, okay.
From, yes, that is correct.
Questions?
No questions.
I have a few questions regarding the diversification of the revenues, which is part of our SAP. We agreed as a council that it was important to diversify the types of monies we're bringing in so that we're not so reliant on ad valorem taxes. And my questions are specifically regarding the franchise fee and the public service For either one of these, is there a commitment or what is the commitment that we would have to make to the providers of these services if we were to go with either one of these in the future?
So the franchise fee is handled as a fee, so you would have to go into an agreement with the utility provider, in this case, FPNL, and there will be a length to that contract and terms that would have to be determined through legal, I would think.
Do we know what that term is at this point?
Last time it went to council, it was a 30-year agreement, but I'm not sure that we're limited to 30 years. So city manager is indicating no.
Okay, and what about the public service tax?
So the public service tax is a tax. It gets enacted the first quarter, the first day of the next quarter following council's adoption, and it wouldn't have an expiration date, it would be up to council.
Mr. Di Lorenzo, you have a comment for us?
Yes, I might be able to fill in some gaps on the franchise fee. Jason Di Lorenzo, Chief Staff. So yes, it's a 30-year agreement. The Public Service Commission sets up the areas for where each provider can work. The franchise fee basically is you're agreeing that the city is not going to form its own utility. It doesn't prevent another provider from coming in. That's the job of the Public Service Commission. So that's what you're paying, that's what they are paying for, is to be not in competition with us if we were to move forward. There's some other items in there related to rights of way and that kind of stuff, but a lot of that is already set forth in state law. There's some offsets for building permit fees, but in our case, that's very low for when they're working in the right of way, there's an offset for that.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Good, thank you.
So theoretically, Elena, if we were to go with one of these, and if it's an unrestricted revenue source, this means that we could use it to pave our roads, we could use it for stormwater, we could use it for utilities, is all that correct?
That is correct.
So we ju, and I understand Mayor pointed out on this chart showing, you know, our millage and the fact that we don't have either one of these, and I do commend staff for having such a large budget that we've been able to operate with them without this fee and with such a low millage. That being said, we all know that our stormwater fees, they're high now and they're going to get higher because we need to fix our infrastructure. I just want council to think about the ability to bring in this consistent and diversified revenue source so that we can use it for infrastructure, specifically our paving. I remember Mr. Cody's presentation saying, I think that the amount that we'd have to put into our roads is about $5 million a year in order to get them back up to par, which coincidentally is exactly what we could bring in using the franchise fee annually. So I do think it's something we should consider just as we look to be more economically resilient, specifically being able to withhold or withstand a recession, which we might be facing rather soon, because we are so reliant on our property, our residential property taxes right now. It's a dangerous position to be in. So we can offset some of these things, being that this is an unrestricted revenue source, we can provide relief elsewhere and still have a consistent revenue source moving forward, which I think puts our city in a better position financially.
Agreed, and I would just add to that and also to Vice Mayor's point. So if that were a consideration, it does offer some additional flexibility, which is very important, but I would also ask that we each keep an eye on if that was something of interest, if we were able to balance that increase with a decrease or a cut elsewhere.
Absolutely.
In other words, so it's this concept of neutrality. In other words, we're not looking just to add, but because it offers more flexibility, it's worth understanding and looking at, because we might, might find another area which does provide revenue but is more, less flexible, and therefore we may want to, you know, cut that in favor of something like this. It's, it's something worth looking at.
Absolutely, Mayor, and I think my, my goal is to, I like the idea of taxing things on usage versus just a flat fee, which is what we're look, what we are charging right now for, in other areas. So we have one flat fee, for instance, obviously for millage on everybody's house. We've got one stormwater fee, whereas this is more based on usage, and I think that that's a more fair way to tax people based on their consumption. That makes more sense to me. So if we can definitely level this out, relieve pressure elsewhere, and maybe impose one of these, it's something to consider as we move forward.
Absolutely, good, okay. Thank you for the, for the information, ladies, we appreciate the presentation. And I think it would be appropriate now to move on to presentation number two, which is parks and rec.
James Hurst, Director of Parks and Recreation. Today's presentation is just an overview of what Parks and Recreation provides to our community, some of the challenges that we are facing, and then also looking into the future as well. So our mission statement for Parks and Recreation is, we strive to make Palm Coast a great place to live, visit, and recreate. Our staff is dedicated to bringing citizens of Palm Coast quality parks and recreation experiences and to improve quality of life through facilities and programs. Then we also have a wire statement, and this talks about why we do what we do, and it's to enhance communities so that everyone feels welcome. Before we get into the budget lines, I just want to show some benefits of Parks and Recreation to our community. So this, this chart here shows us the power of parks. It was a tool created by our Florida Parks and Recreation Association on what parks and trails can bring to communities. So we input some of our numbers here, and as you can see, you can see the benefits here for that Palm Coast Parks App. So we have a $92.8 million cost, care cost savings, and that's just due to people getting out, using the trails, the amount of outdoor spaces that we have, you know. We have the property values for the, for houses, and that's just due to distance from the parks, so if you're closer to the park, property value goes up. Just amount of swim lessons and some of our after-school programming as well. So you saw the benefits in the last slide. This next slide shows us the people that bring Parks and Recreation to our community. They are very highly skilled, well-trained Parks and Recreational professionals. They do care and they work very hard each and every day to make sure that our residents, our citizens get the best quality of life possible. Parks and Recreation, we follow two key performance indicators that we track. One is cost recovery, and the other one is utilization. So if you see here on the left, this is from our National Recreation and Park Association. They send out surveys through to everyone in the nation, all US residents, and this is one of the, one of their responses they got, and they send something out every month. And it just shows that, you know, 87% of adults seek low or no-cost recreation opportunities. So this kind of goes back into our cost recovery. We try and make all our programs 100% cost recovery, but we also want to try and find the balance between making sure that we also have free or low-cost programs as well. So when we create programs, when we discuss programs, we categorize them into two levels, a level one and a level two. A level one is those free, low-cost programs. Level two is more of our revenue generating programs. And so in our revenue generating programs, they help us balance out our non-cost and low-cost programs to kind of offset that balance, and we're providing programs for everyone in the community. And then we look at our utilization rate. We do track people coming into our facilities and our programs, but something that we are going to start tracking now is our retention utilization. And so just quickly, we looked at 2022, we saw 44,000 residents come back to our facilities and programs, and that tells us that, you know, we do have a good quality of service. They do like our programs, they do like our facilities, and they keep coming back. So we are looking to expand that in the future as well. Just quickly, by the numbers, this is from last fiscal year, just do some quick highlights. So we had over 54,000 rounds of golf. We had 368 programs, and we have 26 sport fields. We take care of 13 parks and eight playgrounds. And now we'll go into each budget line. So the first one we have is park, and if you need to stop me, just yell, but if you need, we'll start with park maintenance. So currently, our park maintenance staff, we mow about 100, we landscape about 116 acres. That includes parks, trails, and all our fields. We maintain eight playgrounds, 13 parks, and the trails as well. When we were looking at our level of service, we looked at the amount of hours it takes to complete all labor, all tasks to, to be done at our parks. So we have, and then we divided those into two separate categories, landscaping and asset maintenance. So landscaping is base, basic mowing, edging, things like that. And then our asset maintenance is more of our, like repairing bridges at Linear Park, cleaning bathrooms twice a day, removing trash, fixing trash cans, those benches. So all up, we had about just under 50,000 total hours of desired level of service that we want to provide for our community. We're just a little bit low of that. It would take about 24 to 25 employees to help us with that, to get to that desired level of service, and we're short about two or three people. Some of the challenges that we've facing here is obviously, is the amount of sport fields. So this two graphs just kind of show you that our number of permits are increasing, especially at Indian Trail Sport Complex, it's gone up every year. Ralph Carter is also another big one that we use. And then here on the right, as you can see, is our lighted fields, and 98% are permitted out compared to 2% that are not lit, that are permitted out. So it's quite telling that a lot, the need for lighted fields in the community. And then we also bring in tournaments to help with our economic impact. We work very closely with the TDC. We have the, we have a formula that works out the sales tax and the bed tax that each tournament brings in. And then last year, we, we went pretty well, and this year we're predicted to either match or, or go above last year's, last year's numbers with, we've got a big, couple of big tournaments coming in June, July, and August. And that is it for Palm Harbor, any, Palm Parks Maintenance, any questions?
I have a question. Just for you and your department to think about. I think you quickly mentioned that you were three folks down in your forecast or your projected number of staff. The city of Palm Coast has been blessed and continues to be blessed with a large group of people that are willing to volunteer. We know that because when we have volunteer-type events, cleanups, and other types of projects, we get a good turnout. So my question is, have you considered, or will you consider a, an adopt a park program so that we can solicit additional volunteers to perhaps fill in that gap for those kind of jobs or services that don't require a skilled city employee? In other words, something that would free up time for your regular folks, that these volunteers, I realize they have to be managed and trained up, and I know there's a thing there, but you get a second benefit from that. Not only do you perhaps reduce your personnel expense, but you get more engagement in the usage of the park and more ownership by the residents. This is my park, I'm here to make sure that it's kept up. I just, I just want you to consider that in your thinking.
Yeah, no, great question. We, we do have something in place. There are a few organizations that utilize it, so we're, we're looking to expand it as soon as possible, but we, we do have something in place, yeah.
City council members, questions about?
I just have one question. Do we charge for our field permits right now?
For Sport Alliance, no, but for outside organizations, yes.
Okay, thank you.
And Sport Alliance are our local, sorry, Sport Alliance is our local groups, yeah.
You didn't mention new parks in your presentation today, so.
That would be included.
There is a plan for some, for additional parks.
Yes, that would be included in our level of service, yeah. It would be included in our mostly updated level of service.
Okay.
Yeah, still working on some details.
All right, very good. All right, thank you for your presentation.
So then next, we'll go down to Palm Harbor Golf Course. So as I, earlier, I said we had over 54,000 rounds of golf last year, which is a great number. We do have a quality course over there, and the guys over there do a really great job. And then just another quick highlight is that we hosted two Florida State Golf Association tournaments, and they were for the youth. 68 golfers came out, two weekends in a row, two weekends throughout the year, and utilized our court, and it's just due to their experience and the quality that we had out there, they have committed to come back next year as well. So it's some great news.
Have we achieved a historical record yet on the rounds of golf?
In our calculations, yes.
We have?
Yeah.
Okay. And I, I guess the other question, not for today perhaps, I would be curious, if you could find me, the number of rounds of golf played at other public courses, I guess perhaps of cities of somewhat similar size. In other words, is 54,000 a good number? I don't know the answer to that. If it's record-breaking for us, great. I'd just like to compare it to some, someplace else, preferably in the region, if that data exists.
Okay, yeah, we can do that, thank you. So we do have some challenges at the golf course as well. We have an aging, aging facilities, aging equipment. We are looking next year to the parking lot behind the clubhouse, closer to the canal, to kind of regrade and put some more dirt down. We have the old foundations from the old clubhouse coming through, so it is kind of causing a tripping hazard, so we're trying to work on that. The parking pressures, so with the increased utilization, it is sometimes hard to find some parking. And then just price increase with our equipment and supplies, just, you know, we need these suppliers to keep our, our course in really good standards that the public, the public expects, you know. We look at top dress sand is a 68% increase. Our fertilizer is about 36% increase, so. But our, those are some of the challenges that we're finding out at the golf course. Any questions on the golf courses?
Anyone?
Sorry, I have quite a few budget lines.
And the single biggest event each year is the, the senior tournament, right?
Senior games, yeah, that's a big one. Men's league is also very, very popular.
The winners from that go on to regional and.
Regional and state and nationals.
State competition as well. And what, what is the, the calendar date of that?
Senior games is September.
In September.
For Palm Coast, yes.
So everybody has all summer to practice up and get ready.
Definitely, hit the, hit the range. So we'll get into Parks and Recreation. This is just our generalized Parks and Recreation that has more to do with the community center, our summer camps, athletic programs, our senior programs, and all that that come out through the community center. So quick, big, brief snapshot at utilization of, for private rentals. As you can see here, we've had quite a bit of a jump in attendance to our private rentals, to about 20,000 people coming to, to the community center. But then you notice that the number of rentals have decreased, and that's just due to the amount of bigger rentals coming to the community center. And so that's kind of causing us, with the parking pressures that we have out there, that's kind of causing us to strategize renting out rooms. So we don't want to rent out two rooms with 300 people in both rooms. We're just not going to have the parking and the expectation and the quality of service that we would like to give and customer service, they're not just going to not have a really good experience here at the community center. So we're trying to strategize our ways of getting as, getting rentals in, but kind of making sure they have a great experience as well.
So are you sacrificing some revenue now because of the parking limitation? So are you sacrificing some revenue now because of the parking limitation?
Not, not revenue, it'd be more because of the bigger rentals that are there most of the day, rather than, you know, maybe a one-hour or two-hour rental.
So we're not, okay, so we're not losing so far, okay.
No, not that we've seen. But we do, along with all our private rentals, we do host a hundred and fifty, we hosted a hundred and fifty-two programs for the community last year as well. So finding that balance is proving a little tough. And then summer camp, which actually starts in two weeks, we, we have, all our age groups are pretty much full up with ten, ten, ten kids deep in, in a waitlist. So we've got quite a people, number of people wanting to use our summer camp. But we do offer a scholarship through the CBDG, and then over the years, we've handed out a number of scholarships to all, to the residents of Palm Coast. And twenty-twenty-three, we're hitting, we're planning on a hundred campuses utilizing our scholarship, and then we'll utilize it, so far, we've utilized forty-two thousand dollars over that scholarship.
I, I, I'm going to ask a question just because we're on the community center right now, and I need to phrase this carefully, because this is really for city council members. My first thought is, the question is, was the community center poorly planned? And I'm not looking to cast a dark shadow on, on prior administrations that put this together, but the growth curve and the forecast for population has been known since ITT first put a plan in place. So we have built at a very big expense a community center, which we have found in a very, very short period of time has outgrown itself, forcing us to, you know, build additional community center, other things. In other words, we have to react now because it's clearly not outgrown itself, it's, you know, blown itself up, if you will, which creates pressure and stress on your budget as well. So I'm just bringing it back to city council. As we think about new projects in the future, we have to more carefully plan them because to, to build something at great expense, taxpayer expense, that is outdated so quickly just is, is unfathomable to me. And again, maybe it's impossible to, to know, but like I said, the population numbers were known, and we need to be better at planning in the future. So I would put the pressure on us to be better planners for the future.
I understand that, Mayor. I think we're seeing that already being put into place by building of the MOC and also the Sheriff's Office. The new sheriff's facility is built to be able to expand, which I commend. Are we doing this, though, with the Southern Rec Center? Because I think that that's where the current focus would be. Are we planning for the future in this manner?
There is plans with the Lehigh Trailhead, the extra parking over there, and then there is plans for extra parking at the Southern Rec Center as well.
Well, and I can appreciate that, thank you, but I'm not just referring to parking. You know, as far as being able to host events, part, private parties, things of that nature, if we're running into these issues now at the community center, I would anticipate, in a good way, running into these issues at the Southern Rec Center. So have we, have we planned for that, not for the next five, ten years, but for the next twenty, thirty years?
Right, I mean, building in the flexibility is, is what we're saying here, and I think it's just, that's a lesson for us up here on the day, is to make sure that we are weaving that into our thought process whenever we're looking at any of these expenditures or facilities for the future, so we don't get caught and have to react and perhaps spend, you know, perhaps not as efficiently as we could have. We don't have crystal balls, but we do know what the future holds in terms of what's coming, so we just have to be smart about it.
All right, and then just, again, we just, we've kind of touched a couple of these, but again, we have some challenges at the community center with increased utilization, our parking pressures, seasonal staff, hiring counselors, retaining staff is sometimes a challenge for us, balancing out the space between room rentals and programs, and then also our waiting list. So if we don't have the staff, we might have longer waiting lists just due to some of the standards that we've set ourselves for the safety of all our people in our programs and our camps. And then next, we'll hit the Palm Coast Aquatic Center. So I think there was a question on last, a couple of budget meetings ago about the revenue, and kind of just, we always see an increase in Q3 for the revenue at the Palm Coast Aquatic Center, and that's just due to school getting out, people looking for swim lessons, getting warmer. So we always see quite a bit of a spike in, in revenue at the aquatic center. But some of the other highlights that the great guys do over there at the, at the aquatic center is that we've, since twenty-eighteen, we've provided nine thousand swim lessons to over a thousand residents, and usually that's done with an average to about four to five swim instructors through every year. So they're very busy all year round when, when it comes to swim lessons, so. But then we also host fifty-three aquatic programs in twenty-twenty-two, and then we also provide the scholarships for opportunities for swim lessons as well, and we have eighteen planned for this year. Again, we have some challenges at the aquatic center. We have aging facilities that requires more maintenance, limited space to continue to grow our aquatics program. The pool is only so big, you know, so we have to work, try and figure out when to schedule our programming, hiring and retaining staff, and that, our lifeguards, you know, it takes twenty-nine hours to certify as a lifeguard. And then they, on top of that, they have to always be professional when they're out on the pool deck, you know? They have to do weekly in-service where they train on their skills, their response times, and then they also got to work on their fitness side. So it's just, it's quite, it's a very professional job, and these guys do a very great job over there. Any questions on the aquatic center?
Yeah, James, I have a question. Can we see just maybe at the end of the year or at the beginning of next year, a report from you all on the cost-benefit of the year-round aquatic center? I know it's expensive to keep this up, and it obviously provides a benefit to the community to have it open year-round, but I think we really need to seriously look at the, the cost-benefit, the utilization, whether or not this benefit that we are providing is actually being taken advantage of, or if maybe we can institute scholarship programs during the slower season so that we can maybe use manpower in other ways during the busy season, you know, just some type of analysis to see how we can best use our resources in the most economically feasible way.
Yeah, no, definitely, we can do that.
Counsel, I would add to that. It's my understanding that the school district has offered a reprieve to keep their facility open for at least a, another perhaps season, I don't know beyond that. So I would urge you to have your department think about the impact on our facility when their facility closes, assuming it closes, but you have to, you have to expect that. I want you to do, you know, a worst-case look at that because the pressure on our facility would be significant.
Okay, good, yep, I got that. And then lastly, we have the Southern Rec Center. So kind of, this one's a little bit different. We'll just kind of go through some operation, operations of this, of the Southern Rec Center and what we are planning. So when we were in design, design phase, we had some public forums with the community, and then also we talked to our participants that utilize our programs at our pickleball tournaments and things like that. And so we looked at the hours that we would like the rec center to be open, and, you know, we're looking seven days a week with ninety-seven hours a week to be open. This, you know, covers early morning people, but then also our working, working people as well in, in the community. And then we would have obviously our maintenance closures, so we would continue to close our tennis courts at two P M. for grooming, but the facility and pickleball will remain open, and then we would have some scheduled maintenance weeks. We would, kind of, the programs that we would have at the Southern Rec Center, so we'd continue with our successful current programs, tennis programs. We would look to include some more pickleball, pickleball programs, and that includes beginner, intermediate, advanced for youth and adults. Look into adaptive recreation programs, so wheelchair tennis, pickleball, Special Olympics, include more inclusive programs, have the ladder leagues, round robins, that have been successful with our tennis, and also been very successful with our pickleball at Holland Park. Then we'd continue to do private group lessons and then open play and drop-in for any, for everyone. Some predicted expenditures that we would see with this Southern Rec Center, so, you know, we, our pickleball supplies, like ball machines and supplies for our programs, we would see an increase in, in our rec activities for that, but they, those are cost recovery, and we're actually looking at a grant with the U.S. Pickleball Association. They have a community impact grant to help new facilities, and they provide pickleball program supplies to this facility. It's about two hundred and fifty dollars, but, and that goes a long way for us, and that will help us grow our programs as well. We would also look to add two full-time customer service reps to the facility. They would help with operations for tournaments and then also facility operations. They kind of mirrors our successful community center staffing. We have two people at desk at all times, so that gives us, lets us have more superior customer service to anyone that comes into the center, but then also we look at the safety of our, of our employees, you know, and always having two people there at all times, especially at night, helps with the safety of that as well. We would see a little bit of increase with inclusion programs to our rec activities, and then obviously the increase in water and electricity. And then we are pursuing the LEED Silver Certification for the rec center as well.
So, oops, two questions before you move on. So we have a, we've, we've enjoyed an annual U.S. Tennis Association event.
Yep.
Will the, the, will this project increase our standing with them?
Yes.
So that we will continue to have an even bigger tournament?
Some feedback we got from this past year is when they were seeing the construction and the, learning about the construction, they were very excited. We, we are, we are confirming them to come back next year, and the new, hopefully the new rec center will be open by then, but we will also try to expand it, and it's in the next slide, but expand it to women's.
So as this, as this becomes an even more important U.S. Tennis Association event, are we considering conversations with stakeholders in the community that might want to sponsor portions, parts, things related to the facility in terms of advertising? I know that we've considered that in the past, is that a part of the program going forward?
We, we are, we are discussing it, yes.
Okay.
We actually have been thinking about that. We haven't really approached anyone just yet.
Okay.
But we are, that is in our thoughts.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
When do we expect these increase in expenditures to start kicking in?
So the, it would be for next year, twenty-twenty-four budget cycle, but the facility would be open January around February is when we're looking to open to the public.
Okay, and then when is, and this might be a question for you, city manager, when is the report on the parks and recreation study that we, that's currently undergoing or that has been completed, when is that coming back?
The twentieth of June.
Okay.
Yeah. The Parks Master Plan, yeah.
Thank you, Parks Master Plan. I just want us to keep our current parks in mind as we look at that. Our chambers were filled with people who are very concerned with the condition of them. This is all very exciting, but we can't lose sight of that.
Yep. So next is, we're just looking into the future for the Southern Rec Center, so we kind of broke it out into different years of operations. So we want to build our pass holder and customer service base. We do have a very good one at the, for tennis right now, but we would look to establish more of our pickleball pass holder, customer base, establish our pickleball programs, continue with our tennis programs, look to recruit and apply for more tournaments, and then work on our grant requirement through the TDC as well. Second year operations is continuing to build upon our programming, continue to build on our pass holder base, expand our tournaments, and work on prioritizing some social events. And then our third year of operations would be focusing on room rentals, amenity packages, and then growing the pro-circuit for tennis as well. And then lastly, just looking in the future in our five-year Parks and Rec Plan, you know, we're looking to continue with safe and quality services for all recreation facilities, parks, and trails. We want to continue our current and future, and grow our future programming, and then staff development and training. With that, that is Parks and Recreation Overview, and any questions, any other questions?
I don't have any other questions, but thank you to you and your staff, you guys are really awesome, we really appreciate you.
Thank you.
No questions, thank you for your presentation.
Very good, thank you. All right, we'll move forward now with the next presentation, number three, which is Public Works Department Overview. And while they're getting ready, city manager, so based on these sort of high-level overviews, you'll have or will be, or have already invited each of the, of our city council members to come and talk to you on, on, on a more granular or detailed level in terms of the expenses associated with these high-minded thoughts.
That is correct, Mayor.
Okay, so that's open for all of us, okay.
Good morning, Mayor, City Council. I am Matt Mansel, your Director of Public Works, and here today to give you a look forward into the operations of our department. So our Public Works Department comprises three distinct divisions. We have your Streets Division, Facilities Management, and your Fleet Management Division. So through our diverse range of tasks, we actively contribute to enhancing the safety and functionality of your community. And together, these three divisions demonstrate our dedication to the city council's priority of delivering safe and reliable services. Our Public Works Department stands as a shining example to our commitment to delivering excellence today while continuously striving to improve for tomorrow. With an unwavering dedication to our community, we embrace our Y statement at every level of our operations. Each day, we take on the responsibility of enhancing the quality of life for our residents by providing essential services and maintaining critical infrastructure. Through our department's strategic planning process, we developed five overarching goals. These goals not only provide us with a clear direction, but also ensure that we consistently deliver the highest level of service that our citizens expect. While these goals do appear broad, they're supported by a range of specific objectives that are outlined in our five-year planning efforts. Our first goal aligns with our commitment to provide safe and reliable services. We recognize that fostering a healthy, safe, and secure workplace is paramount to attracting and retaining a talented workforce capable of delivering the quality services our citizens expect, and we recognize your support through keeping the maintenance operations complex and the future fleet facility as a priority in your, in your SAP priorities. Our second goal embodies our core purpose, which encapsulated in our Y statement of delivering excellence today and improving for tomorrow. It reflects our dedication to meeting and surpassing the expectations of our citizens, continuously striving for improvement and setting higher standards for ourselves. Goal three emphasizes the importance of providing training and development opportunities for our staff. This commitment aligns with our succession planning efforts, ensuring that we possess the necessary skills within our team to fulfill our mission effectively. The fourth goal represents our aspiration to be exemplary stewards of taxpayer dollars. By maintaining efficiencies, taking proper care of city-owned property, being proactive and seeking opportunities to exercise that fiscal responsibility, we demonstrate our commitment to maximizing value of public funds. And we'll talk more about that throughout the presentation as we get into lifecycle management of our assets as well. And goal five enables us to benchmark our policies and procedures against established industry standards in the field of public works. By adhering to best practices in our daily operations, we ensure that our department remains at the forefront of excellence. Furthermore, this goal allows us to cultivate a network of public works professionals, fostering collaboration and knowledge sharing amongst our peers. And in summary, these five goals formulated through our strategic planning process serve as our compass, guiding our department's efforts. By aligning our actions with these goals, we're committed to delivering exceptional service and continuously enhancing our performance for the betterment of our citizens and our community. Getting into operations, the mowing and landscaping, maintenance crews are responsible for maintaining and upkeeping our turf grass, our vegetation through fertilization, weed control, site distance efforts. They maintain our irrigation systems on public and city-owned assets, including rights of ways and medians. So this, this crew is probably one of our most visible and what we're most known for here within the city of Palm Coast. You can see in these efforts, our crews maintain quite a bit of infrastructure, so we have over a hundred and twenty rights of way that we maintain the landscaping on, including three hundred and sixty-seven plus acres of grass, a hundred and twelve including 367-plus acres of grass, 112 linear miles of edging, and over 386 irrigation zones with dozens of sprinkler heads amongst each one of those that our crews work very hard to keep operating each day. Our facilities and, Facilities Mowing and Landscaping Crew plays a crucial role in maintaining the landscaping around various city facilities, as the, the name would suggest. They ensure aesthetically pleasing, well-maintained environment. Their responsibilities encompass the care of numerous key locations, including the building we're in today, City Hall, the five fire stations, two wastewater treatment plants, and three water treatment plants. In addition to city facilities, our landscaping crew is responsible for the upkeep of 67 well sites and 165 lift stations. And these stations are scattered throughout the city, which takes quite a bit of mobilization efforts each day to travel to each site, conduct landscape operations, pack up and move to the next one. As you can imagine, that's quite the feat. And these sites play a vital role in our water and wastewater utility systems and require regular maintenance and upkeep. The comprehensive services provided by our facility landscaping crew encompass, much like our streets mowing, the mowing, edging, fertilizing, weed control, irrigation, and more. Their dedicated efforts contribute not only to the aesthetic appeal of our city, but also to the overall functionality and professionalism of these important locations. Their diligent work helps create an environment that residents, employees, and visitors can appreciate and enjoy. Our mowing crews play a vital role in supporting both the pillars of safe and reliable services as well as sustainable environment and infrastructure. They have key performance indicators that focus on maintaining the city's mowing schedule at a minimum of a 90% effective rate. Our KPI ensures that mowing activities are conducted efficiently and effectively, contributing to the safety and reliability of our services. So, to monitor and track mowing operations, our division utilizes GIS technology, which enables us to maintain accurate records and leverage data for future decision-making. This technology provides real-time data and establishes a historical record of our operations. By leveraging these metrics, we can make data-driven decisions regarding crew assignments, prioritizing areas that have the greatest impact on meeting our service level expectations. Over the past year, we've achieved an 85% effective rate against this performance standard, with some challenges arising primarily from the maintenance of those well sites and lift stations we spoke about previously. However, by collecting and analyzing this data, we were able to strategically allocate our workforce to provide assistance to these sites, resulting in improvements. So, while we're not meeting the 90% rate right now, we have definitely raised the level of service in areas that we were achieving only a 36% effective rate before to make sure that we're maintaining those sites up to standards. By closely monitoring mowing activities and utilizing these insights, we continuously strive to optimize our operations, given the restricted resources that we do have, while trying to maintain our current level of service every day. And I know I'm going quite fast, but please feel free to stop me at any point if you have questions. Our Streets Special Projects Team is a highly skilled group capable of executing a wide range of minor construction projects in-house. I like to say that this team should be given the first right of refusal to our projects within the city. This unique capability not only saves time and money, but it also empowers us to take full ownership of project timelines and maintain quality control throughout the process. Just this fiscal year, our team has successfully completed several noteworthy projects that have showcased their expertise and dedication and definitely saved us time and money. One of the featured projects this year was the refurbishment of the entry signs on Palm Coast Parkway, as well as State Route 100. Through their craftsmanship and attention to detail, our team restored these signs to their former glory, which enhances the aesthetic appeal of these key entry points to our community. We definitely had some tiles that were damaged and falling off of some of them. The lettering was falling off, and we were continuously going out there and putting them back up. So, this refurbishment definitely revitalized the entryways to our community. Another significant achievement was the renovation of the concession area and front ADA ramp at Palm Harbor Golf Course. This project not only improved the functionality and accessibility of the facility, but it created an environment, inviting environment for golfers and visitors alike. And we hope to be able to brag that we contribute to some of those rounds of golf that our Parks and Rec team has, has seen. Additionally, our team renovated and retrofitted the training room at Fire Station 25. By updating the space and incorporating modern training equipment and facilities, we've enhanced the capabilities of firefighters and improved their training experience. Our team has undertaken concrete sidewalk repairs throughout the city, addressing areas in need of repair and ensuring the safety and convenience of pedestrians. I believe on Belter South alone, we had over 150 cracked areas that they were able to do that work in-house. And they continue to, to analyze the condition of our sidewalks, our trails, our multipurpose paths, and make sure that they are safe for our community. So, the ability of our Special Projects Team to handle these projects in-house highlights our commitment to efficiency, cost effectiveness, and quality control. By leveraging our internal resources and expertise, we're able to maintain that control over the timelines and consistently deliver high-quality results at a savings to our city.
Mr. Mansel, I do want to stop you and just, it cannot be overstated how important your department is in the Special Projects area. The stuff that you guys do is absolutely amazing. And I would say be careful what you wish for on first right of refusal, because I will be looking to take you up on that.
Thank you.
Just want to commend you.
I appreciate that. Next, we'll talk about our Quick Response Team. So, this team faces the unique challenge of not knowing what situations they're going to encounter from day to day. They constantly prepare to respond swiftly to a wide range of emergencies and unexpected events. So, anyone that puts in a Palm Coast Connect case or calls customer service, this is usually the team from my department that would go out and address those. Whether it's removing hazardous trees from unusual locations or handling immediate cleanup tasks such as lovely roadkill opportunities that we get to clean up or debris, the Quick Response Team is the team that gets dispatched immediately. If we could look at the work orders processed last fiscal year, this department or this division serviced 2,959 work orders. And in the current fiscal year, over 1,455 at the time that this slide was made. Obviously, that number goes up daily, showcasing the team's consistent workload and responsiveness. So, the Quick Response Team tackles various types of tasks throughout the year. For instance, they handle those hazard tree removals, having already addressed over 150 such cases this year. They also engage in hazardous vegetation and fire mitigation efforts with 44 instances so far. They play a huge role in maintaining cleanliness of our city by conducting litter and debris pickup, having completed 132 instances. And they address road maintenance needs, including pothole repairs and over 100 roadkill incidents thus far. We'll talk about litter a little more in a few slides, but it's important to note that each employee within our department has a role that they play within litter cleanup. So, each of our employees that's on a mower has a picker and a bucket. We have a team that goes out ahead of our landscaping crews and, and picks up debris so that we're not mowing over those. And then we have the Quick Response Team that responds to, you know, work order-based, usually illegal dumping or large litter call-ins. So, this team is dedicated to providing that exceptional customer service and ensures that our requests are properly addressed. We're currently achieving a 95% success rate in responding to work orders within 24 hours and closing those out within a seven-day window. We'd love to be at 100%. Obviously, some of those jobs take a little more and take a little more scheduling, you know, requirements, so. Our Sign and Signal Division is responsible for repair and maintenance of various traffic signal infrastructure. This includes managing and servicing 66 traffic signal locations, 24 flashing pedestrian crossings, and 19 school zone flashing beacons. They play a role in monitoring and assisting in the maintenance of over 3,500 street lights and act as the liaison between the city and FPNL on those repairs. They're also tasked with inspecting and maintaining over 11,000 signs in accordance with the Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Device Standards. And all of these signs are printed in-house using our equipment by our staff. In FY22, the responsibility for solid waste management was transferred from Utility Customer Service Division to our department. This transition began with the hiring of a temporary solid waste inspector, followed by the appointment of a residential collection supervisor in October. And Ms. Alyssa Roscoe was with me today in that role. And the solid waste inspector has since become a full-time employee as well. This transfer of responsibilities was aligned with your priority to ensure safe and reliable services, particularly in high-value service contracts, where quality control and contractual compliance are crucial. The residential collection contract, which services over 41,000 dwellings, and I'm told that that number is closer to 42,000 today. Right? Currently generates monthly invoices totaling over $1.2 million. Under the Collection and Sanitation Division, our primary focus is on effectively managing the residential collection contract. We aim to maintain clean roadways and neighborhoods by addressing solid waste-related issues, including a lot of other various tasks. So, we've taken this division and not only put them in charge of that solid waste contract oversight, but anything related to solid waste, litter, debris, street sweeping, all of those components are now consolidated under Ms. Roscoe's control so that we can make sure we're tracking and using our resources accordingly. The Collection and Sanitation Division is a liaison between residents and the solid waste hauler contracted by the city, ensuring all parties abide by the contracted requirements. This is accomplished through in-person interactions, case management, monthly meetings with the hauler, and community outreach. Not only does this division work to remove waste from homes, but also our community through programs like Adopt a Median, Keep Palm Coast Clean Litter Pickup Events, Trash Bumpouts Throughout the Community, Street Sweeping Operations, and the Storm Debris Contract. Hauler Onus has been a huge tool for identifying where the responsibility lays. And this is something that Ms. Roscoe brought on through analyzing the cases that were being given to the city to determine whether those were an error or an oversight by the hauler or an opportunity for us to educate ourselves or our residents on the requirements of the contract or how to be more efficient through those efforts. And like I said, I do have Ms. Roscoe here. She has a couple of points to talk about with our current transition to a new hauler that will begin on the first of June.
Hello. Hello, as Mr. Mansel stated, my name is Alyssa Roscoe. I'm your Residential Collection Supervisor. And I'm here today to discuss the current transition of our waste services provider from Waste Pro to FCC on June 1st. As of today, all priorities and items from FCC are up to date. They're eager to begin servicing our community. On the slide that you will see, there, on the left, there is a mailer that is being sent to all residents, letting them know what their service days are. Most residents will not see a service day change, but we wanted to ensure all residents did receive this mailer with the information about FCC. All of our services are remaining the same, twice a week for trash, once a week for recycling, yard waste, and bulk. The only difference the resident should see out in the street is the color of the truck. Their, their trucks are white versus the green that we've been used to the last quite a while. Additionally, on the slide you'll see on the right is our city's webpage with some frequently asked questions, as well as some resources for our community. And I'm here if council has any questions in regard to that implementation.
Just a point in a conversation I had with you, it's my understanding that the new provider will utilize more trucks so that there will actually be more routes with fewer number of stops or homes per route.
Correct, yes.
And the reason that's possible is because they, we have history to analyze and the routes have become more consistent?
So, a lot of what we're looking at, if there are change over days, we are looking at the efficiency of that. Palm Coast has added, you know, some residents here, some residents here. So, by working with FCC, we've been able to say, okay, let's limit it to under 1,000 residents per route that way that we can lower those service times for our residents, but it also increases efficiency. So, we're not having a route that is partially down here and partially down here. It's streamlining that to make it more, less of an imprint as well.
And then I'm going to have an ask here, which I'm not expecting an answer right now. I would like to see, you know, sometime relatively soon, and not directly related to this budget, but for future budget consideration, a program to encourage commercial entities to utilize the city for solid waste pickup in the long-term future. There are legal hurdles and timelines that have to be, you know, traversed. But now would be the time to start that program so that we can take advantage of that commercial revenue at the earliest opportunity possible. And I assume that you'll be working on that.
Yes, sir. That's one of, we've got quite an ambitious to-do list, but as one of the things that we'd like to tackle in this new division.
And Mayor, we, we have heard your council's request during the, through the SAP process to make that a priority. So, you'll be hearing regular updates on that from us.
Thank you, and thank you for that, Mayor.
Questions? I mean, everybody get ready. So, this is one of those very, very important services, which is going to change on June the first. So, if we have questions or if you haven't had an opportunity to have a, a personal meeting, I encourage it so that we are able to project, you know, a good transition to all of our, all of our members in the public. Questions?
Let's hope it goes smoothly.
Well, no, no, we're past hope. So, I, I, I've spent the time, and the transition plan, I think, is really good. So, barring some unknown issue, which is out of our control, I do feel confident that you all have a great plan and will be at the ready and have every phone manned beginning that Monday morning. I'm sorry, it's not a Monday morning, is it?
It's not, it's a Thursday.
Thursday morning. So, you have Thursday and Friday to make it perfect and start the next week off. Good, okay.
We, we have a high level of confidence in their success. They've met or exceeded every milestone to this point. And they're very open and communicative with Alyssa and myself. So, we definitely think it'll be a good partnership moving forward.
Good. And Matt, there's more to your presentation?
Yes, sir.
Okay, then I'll wait till the end, keep going.
Okay. All right, so litter cleanup obviously is an important aspect of our operations. We've dedicated resources and we have procedures in place to make sure that we're addressing this issue. It is a constant issue and concern. But just to kind of go over some of our current operations and how we address it, we have two full-time employees assigned to litter carts. These carts are deployed ahead of mowing crews to proactively collect litter in the areas scheduled for maintenance. And this helps areas clean and prevent, helps keep the areas clean and prevent litter from interfering with the mowing process. However, like I stated before, all employees play a role in our litter cleanup. They're encouraged to pick up litter in the areas they're working, ensuring litter is collected as they perform their regular tasks. Employees also respond to calls reporting litter near their work site for the day, promptly addressing any litter-related concerns. And our Quick Response Team, as discussed before, responds to incidents of illegal dumping and collects debris associated with such activities. They play a crucial role in maintaining cleanliness. And our mowing rotation timelines are strategically planned to support effective litter cleanup. By coordinating the mowing schedule with litter collection efforts, we can address litter accumulation before it becomes a larger problem. If we get behind on mowing rotation, that does negatively affect our ability to keep up with that litter. So, during the growing season, we see a little bit of, a little bit more litter buildup as grass is growing faster, and we're working to keep up with that with the resources that we have. On average, each mower collects about 150 pounds of litter each week. This translates to filling up approximately two 30-yard dumpsters with litter every week. In the previous year, our dedicated Public Works crews removed over 100,000 pounds of litter. And this significant figure underscores our commitment to maintaining a clean environment and highlights the substantial impact of our litter cleanup initiatives. By employing these strategies and engaging our workforce, we aim to effectively manager, manage litter cleanup throughout the city, ensuring a cleaner and more visually appealing. ensuring a cleaner and more visually appealing community for our residents. We're also looking into innovative ways to engage the community through those litter cleanup efforts, through some of our campaigns, and Ms. Roscoe and her staff are looking at ways to revitalize some of those programs.
So if I can, and this is to, I think, to Vice Mayor's point sometime back in terms of creating some kind of community engagement to, look, the litter problem is getting worse. We can't hide from it. It absolutely is getting worse. So I guess another question would be, you all are experts on what composes that litter, and I'm going to guess that there are some number of retail establishments that contribute, not directly but indirectly with their, you know, cups and bags and everything else. Have we ever thought about reaching out to the, the business community to adopt areas to, you know, contribute to remove the litter that's left behind from their packaging? It's just a thought. This is a workshop. That's what we're here for today, is to workshop stuff. It's just a thought. It's hard to imagine that if you went to, you know, and they're not the offenders, I understand it, but they are the, the source. If you went to the source and you said, hey, you know, would you like to be responsible for this area, you know, could they be helpful? It's just a workshopping idea.
You know, I, I think you're right. They're not the offender.
No.
They're a business.
Yeah.
If you buy a sandwich from my sandwich shop and you take that bag and toss it out your window, I'm not gonna clean it up. I, I mean, this comes back to something we brought up a while ago, a year ago I brought this up, and I still haven't seen any development on it, so I'll ask our city manager. We had discussed an anti-litter campaign that would have both positive messages with signage, some sort of theme, like "Don't Mess With Texas" is a very successful one, along with some enforcement. Where are we on that?
Vice Mayor, that was a project instituted to our last year's intern program that got us to a pace of development of that campaign, but also we're working with the sheriff's office on enforcement of that campaign as well, and so those discussions are today happening.
I, I just think it can't wait another year, to be honest with you. I think it's something we need to step it up and make this happen. It's, to take a year and put it in the hands of interns, to me, doesn't do any good. We, I, this should not be that difficult. And, and, you know, you're right, we do have a, a big litter problem, and I think the way to do it is through education along with serious enforcement, and that means fines. You toss that bag from the sandwich shop out the window of your car, and one of our officers sees you, you should get a ticket. And I think that's the only way really to help control this litter. So I'd like to see us make a little more progress on this and get it before council so we, we can make a move on this and make something happen. Also, I'll, I'll mention this since you're here, just by coincidence, yesterday I got a complaint from one of our citizens about the bike-walking trail along Pine Lake Parkway from Bel Air up to the mobile station. They were telling me yesterday that the trash cans have not been emptied for weeks. I don't know if that's true or not, that the weeds and the grass have not been maintained or cut. And, you know, they, they, they just kind of, they use the trail all the time, so I don't know if that's the case or not. I haven't gone out there and checked the trash cans, but if we could take a look at that, is there something that's fallen through the cracks there?
We'll definitely look at that, and I'll get back with you on it.
Please do. I appreciate it very much.
So when we spoke previously too about the GIS software that, that we've been leveraging, I can actually look back and see exactly when crews were in that area last and what was done, so I'll get that information to you.
Yeah, and I realize also somebody could come along and dump a bunch of garbage in a can, and we had just emptied it an hour before, so that can happen too.
Absolutely.
But if we could just, if we could get someone out there and take a look, because again, I got this complaint yesterday. So just happens. You're here today doing this, and it's perfect.
I, I have a lot of confidence that there's a guy listening to this right now back at Public Works, and he's probably dispatching somebody immediately.
That would be helpful.
And if that's not a hint. Perhaps, Vice Mayor, a tangible, maybe measurable for your comment with regards to litter, do we know what the signage situation is as far as, you know, fines for littering signage around the city? City manager, have we looked at, like, have we done an inventory, so to speak, of how many miles in between we have that type of signage? And if there is a specific area, Mr. Mansell, maybe you all have this data, where we were seeing an exorbitant amount of litter, with, where are the signs? I mean, are we talking maybe two miles from that location? Siri's helping. Maybe two miles from that location is the first sign. So maybe if we can look at measurables that way, it might go to actually being able to set milestones for us and goals that we can all kind of see happening.
One thing we have done is I've overlapped.
Sorry.
Siri wants all these.
Siri really wants to help us with this issue.
Exactly. It's a big problem, Siri. And so one thing that we have done is I've overlapped the data that we've been given of where higher litter points are versus the route information to ensure that A, number one, it's not a contractor-related issue, and number two, we do have the Adopt a Median, Adopt a Roadway program that you'll see, I won't call it a relaunch, but a rejuvenation of it later this year, which also brings in that community aspect of it. As far as the signs go, I have added a few signs since October, and much to my disheartenment, they get vandalized. There's, you know, there's no, the signs are there and we can put them in, but until they are enforced by the parties that are able to do so, there's their signage that we.
Are we utilizing then maybe traffic cameras or establishment? To your, to your point also, Mayor, you know, the, or Vice Mayor, the businesses around us may not be responsible for somebody throwing out their hamburger wrapper, but could we maybe leverage any private cameras that they have to see what's going on? Asking them, hey, you know, this sign was vandalized yesterday. Can we look at your camera and see if we can get anybody? And then, and then working with our sheriff's office. I, I know it's kind of a multifaceted approach, but if we know that our crews are picking up over a hundred and three thousand pounds of litter, seems like it's worth it.
Absolutely, and we, we've definitely seen some trends along pretty much all the parkways. At stoplights seems to be a, a high litter area. People stop at the stoplights and toss things out right there. Along the entry and exit ways along ninety-five into our city, that's another heavy area, so we have a lot of that anecdotal evidence. We are looking into, there's, there's some apps out there that not only we could utilize, but we could engage our community in, in utilizing as well that collects the location. You can snap a photo of what kind of litter it is. Some cities have used this to identify and partner with some businesses as well to kind of ask for their assistance in proactive programs. The, the camera piece, I think we'd have to engage with our sheriff most likely on that whenever, whenever it's illegal dumping or, or any kind of vandalism situation. But we, we have looked to, Vice Mayor, to your point, we've done a lot of inventorying and kind of rehashing of our Adopta programs. So signage throughout the city has been kind of inventoried through that GIS system as well. Ms. Roscoe has reached out to known entities that have adopted roadways and re-engaged with them to say, you know, how can we help you, you know, be more active in this area? What can we do to assist? Our community outreach programs have had a lot of success too with our litter cleanup, and our Parks Department has also done the waterway cleanup efforts. So there, there is a lot of components to this, and we can always improve. There, there are resource constraints though as well. I, like I said, I have two guys that pretty much go around all the time. That's their job is to empty those trash cans as well as picking up litter. If I had thirty people, they, they would probably fill up in consistently.
Yeah, I, I know. I, I believe you on that, which is why I feel very strongly that until we have enforcement, that we have, you know, the consequence of getting a fine for the first time. Oh, now it's the second time. That fine doubles, you know. And it has to be something that, that, that people are like, I'm in Palm Coast, and I'm not throwing this bag out the window of my car because there's a deputy behind me, or maybe there's not a deputy, but I might, there might be one. I don't see him. I don't want to get a one hundred, two hundred, five hundred dollar ticket, you know, for this type of behavior. I think that's the only way you're gonna correct that behavior. You know, you just didn't wake up today and decide, I'm gonna litter. You probably have been doing it your whole life. It would be my feeling. If you're doing it, you've been doing it for a long time. And so I think, you know, building a sense of community pride with some sort of slogan that, that makes, you know, keep it classy, Palm Coast. I don't know. Some type of slogan that we need to come up with along with that type of enforcement and penalty will take part of this burden off of your two guys. Because you could use those two guys someplace else rather than just picking up trash on Bel Air. And, 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 you know, I, I think it's about time we step up. We're growing. Our population's increasing. Some people are moving in with these bad habits, so it's gonna get worse. And I think it's time that we bring this back to council. We come up with some agreement with our sheriff and follow all the laws, dot all the i's and cross all the t's and, and get that underway. Because I'd rather see your two guys, you know, doing something else than picking up trash. So thank you.
So next, I'd like to talk about our Facilities Management Division. They have the important task of maintaining both the interior and exterior of various city facilities. This involves conducting repairs and maintenance work through a combination of in-house efforts as well as contracted services. So within our purview, we oversee the upkeep of nineteen city-owned buildings, which include prominent locations such as City Hall, the Five Fire Stations, the Utility Office, our Community Center, Public Works Facility, Fuel Depot, Frida Zamba Pool, Seminole Woods, and the list goes on and on. They also take care of the utility facilities, including water plants and wastewater plants, as well as forty-one outbuildings. So in total, this division is responsible for managing approximately a hundred and seventy thousand square feet of interior space across these facilities, ensuring the functionality, cleanliness, and overall quality of these spaces to meet the needs of both staff and visitors. In addition to our facility maintenance responsibilities, the facility supervisor oversees several citywide contracts. These include janitorial services, security, and other essential services, including HVAC repair and maintenance. These contribute to the smooth operation and security of our facilities and definitely add to our staff's capabilities to do so. On the facilities maintenance side, our KPIs primarily focus on reactive versus proactive work and average work order response time. Our aim is to limit reactive work, which is typically costlier by being proactive through preventative maintenance and scheduled downtime. While we have made progress, our organization still leans towards reactive work, as shown in the pie chart. Most of this is definitely due to manning and capability. We are working our succession planning efforts to make sure that we bolster in the areas that will help us improve that proactive mindset. As we continue, our goal though is to not only go from reactive prevented to preventative, but eventually to engage some predictive maintenance schedule that would reduce downtime and increase our effectiveness rates. Currently, our target average work order response time is less than twenty-four hours. That's from the time that someone throughout the city says that there's a problem within my building. Can you please come help? While we haven't achieved the sub-twenty-four hour range for all categories, it's important to note that critical repairs or requests are addressed as soon as possible, remaining under that twenty-four hour mark, and our staff has created a prioritization system to make sure that we're getting after those life, health, safety situations first, and then to triage maintenance activities after that. The Fleet Management Division plays a crucial role in providing comprehensive lifecycle management for our city fleet. So currently, fleet oversees and maintains a diverse range of vehicles and equipment from over fifty manufacturers, consisting of nine hundred and ninety-six assets, representing a substantial investment with a total replacement value currently at forty-five and a half million dollars. As part of our fleet management responsibilities, we ensure that each vehicle and piece of equipment is properly maintained throughout its lifecycle. This includes routine maintenance, repairs, inspections, and ultimately the strategic replacement of aging or obsolete assets. By effectively managing the lifecycle of our fleet, we maximize their operational efficiency, safety, and longevity while optimizing the overall cost of ownership. By providing complete lifecycle management for our city fleet, we ensure our vehicles and equipment remain in optimal working condition, which supports the operations of all of our city departments and their capability to provide their expected level of service in their respective areas. Our fleet replacement process is a comprehensive year-round endeavor. It involves collaborating with our other departments. The process kicks off each year with extensive planning and gathering input from all those departments, and by the second quarter, we begin reviewing the list of vehicles that have reached or surpassed their planned lifespan based on age. And this year, we started with a preliminary list of two hundred and twenty-five vehicles that we had considered to be aged out of its lifecycle. Our dedicated staff conducts thorough condition assessments for each of those assets to evaluate their overall state and performance, and based on that evaluation, we develop a final recommendation that we present to you, determining the number of vehicles that should be replaced for the current year. So currently this year, we're targeting forty-nine out of those two hundred and twenty-five assets for replacement, stating that not only have they reached their useful lifespan as far as age goes, but their condition assessment means that, that the time has come for us to sunset that, that asset and get a replacement.
What, what are, what are some of those things you're looking at when you look at these vehicles?
So we do a complete condition assessment. Actually, I can show you on the next slide too.
Okay.
The lifecycle cost of a vehicle, there are several factors, right? When we talk about condition, how much is that vehicle costing us annually to maintain? The older that a vehicle gets, obviously, the more it costs to maintain. More, more components wear out.
Are we doing that maintenance ourselves, or majority of it?
We, we do a very large part of that maintenance ourselves. In, our in-house staff does all the PMs and all of the other repairs that they can handle, whether that means capacity in the very limited space that we currently have, or capacity given the fact that we might have a full shop and, you know, an emergency vehicle comes in. We're gonna make that emergency vehicle the priority, and we may contract out some other services to, say, Ford or Ring Power, plethora of other vendors that we have that help us maintain our fleet.
Are we using any of our small mechanic shops to contract out, or are we just going with dealerships?
So we do mostly under warranty. We have Flagler, Flagler equipment, quite a few of those things, St. John's equipment. A lot of the Agpro dealerships around us help us with our John Deere equipment. We have a Kubota dealer out in Hastings that, that we go to from time to time for those pieces of equipment. A lot of the small equipment ages out pretty quickly, so we usually keep those for, you know, like, if it's got a three-year warranty, about two years later is about the time that it'll age out, and the condition, just based on the number of hours we put on these things, you know, means it's time to replace it. So most of what our in-house staff does for small equipment is that preventative maintenance, oil changes, belts, sharpening the blades, replacing things like that, a lot of caster wheel replacement, accident repairs, those kind of situations.
Okay, thanks.
So the lifecycle cost of the vehicle encompasses all the expenses associated with owning it throughout its lifespan, and it includes not only the initial purchase cost, but also ongoing expenses such as fuel, maintenance, repairs, and eventual disposal or replacement. Maintaining a predictable replacement cycle is essential for effective fleet management, and by adhering to that deliberate process, we can anticipate and budget for vehicle replacements, taking into account rising costs for new vehicles, parts and repairs. The increasing cost in automotive industry definitely emphasizes the importance of strategic planning to mitigate financial challenges associated with fleet management. One significant factor influencing the replacement cycle is the delivery timeline for new vehicles, and we've, we've seen an increase in that delivery timeline over the past three years significantly. Delays in delivery have become more common with lead times extending up to six to twenty-four months from time to ordering. These delays can disrupt our replacement plans and impact the availability and readiness of our fleet. So I'll give you an example. Fleet pickup truck, a regular white fleet truck from Ford that we would plan to replace today, that replacement may not be available for twelve months, and we've recently had, in that twelve-month lag time that we're waiting, major repairs that come up when our replacement cycle should have already seen it, you know, rotate out of our fleet and the new replacement vehicle come in. So we're seeing increased costs. So we're seeing increased costs on the operational side, just based on the fact that the replacement has not been delivered in, you know, a, what we would normally consider a reasonable amount of time. The new excessive delays have challenged us on that.
Can I ask you a question? Because that goes into what I was wondering, which is, have you all altered kind of your assessment of the lifecycle chart here based on supply chain issues, the time it's taking to get these vehicles?
I would say yes and no. So we, we want to be stewards of taxpayer dollars and kind of stick to our timelines. Where I do see we're needing to back up and have those discussions, and we have been, are the ones that are over a year out from replacement. That's really affecting our emergency apparatus within the fire department. We're seeing twenty to twenty-four month delays in delivery. So if we expect for a fire truck to last twelve to fifteen years, we need to be talking about its replacement at ten to thirteen years instead of waiting, you know, for that programmed timeline, just based on, you know, that delivery cycle from the, from the manufacturer at this point.
And then my other question that your response kind of brought up is, have we seen a leveling out of the cost of vehicles, or are they continuing to increase? And if they are continuing to increase when we're ordering and ordering them, are we locked in at the price at the time of ordering? Or are we kind of held hostage to that increase by the time that we actually get the vehicle in?
So I would say, pre-COVID, we were locked in very well. We, we do leverage our pre-negotiated contracts. We piggyback Florida Sheriff's contract, Sourcewell, a lot of those other pooled contracts that we leverage bulk discounts from. And our current purchasing method is to present to council with the intent of making those purchase orders in September. That way, we take advantage of this year's contracted prices. We have contracts now that still hold to that line, but we have some that have put disclaimers in there that, based on delivery timelines, you know, we may see a market adjustment prior to delivery, and we've had to make some of those adjustments. One area where council has been very effective in helping us keep up with that is by programming in that contingency amount for those items so that we can, before we finalize and pay for that item, if it's gone up, you know, five percent, that that's built in. But we still shop around and make sure that that's the most value to our organization.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that because I feel like there's, unfortunately, I'm not saying any of our distributors or in our suppliers are doing this, but we are seeing somewhat of taking advantage of the consumer continuing to claim inflation, quote unquote, when we know that things are starting to level out and even decrease. So I appreciate you all putting in the extra effort to shop around and make sure we're getting the best use of our tax dollars.
Some, some of it has definitely played to our favor recently, too, with the, the interest rates the way they are and, and the fact that inventory on dealer lots are starting to increase. Because of the flexibility that you've built into our purchasing program, we've been able to kind of shuffle around. Like recently, we had a Ford vehicle that was ordered for our storm order department that was not going to be available in time. GMC happened to have one equally equipped on the lot that the deal had fallen through with another municipality, and we were able to pick it up at a savings. So we got immediate delivery and at a savings versus the other item. And that's because of the language that we built into our vehicle replacement. We recently upgraded our fleet management systems, including SamSara for telematics. So this allows us to do real-time tracking of our fleet, as well as gives us some diagnostics. It also allows our departments to have some control over building in some reminders on service intervals and stuff. If you had a vehicle that needed a PM every five thousand miles, there's a section within this telematic software for them to update the last mileage at which it received that, and then it would trigger an alert to that operator at the interval when the next service is due. It also has safety features built in that we can see if there's been harsh braking or harsh acceleration, so we can monitor and coach our employees on safe operation of our vehicles, as well as something we're exploring now, which is a vehicle walk-around, check-in, checkout process, which makes the employee with a checklist on their city phone or device, walk around the vehicle to make sure that all components are safe, pre-check it before they operate it. We also leveraged a new fleet management software called Faster. The integration of Faster fleet management has allowed us to capture and analyze those complete lifecycle costs associated with our fleet assets. Previously, we had kind of a commercial off the shelf that was more designed for a small fleet, did not give us the analytics that, that Faster gives us. We can pull reports based on each asset, I can pull it by department, I can pull it on our maintenance staff and determine, you know, what percentage of direct labor hours we're spending on, what kind of tasks, as well as it helps us grade out and do condition reports on those assets and really give a report card on when they are ready to be replaced or when they need to be replaced. Key performance indicators for fleet, one of the major ones that we track is the percentage of preventative maintenance completed on time. So we strive for eighty-five percent of those occurring on schedule. We know everyone is busy, nobody can afford to give up their, their vehicles for any amount of time because it delays operations. But by holding to this, it definitely keeps down unplanned repairs, it keeps that vehicle in service for the longest amount of time possible, and that means a return on investment for the other departments because they're going to have that piece of equipment available a higher percentage of the time. Currently, we are achieving an eighty-seven percent on-time rate for preventative maintenance, and we'll continue to, to track to improve that. One KPI that we're exploring for future use, and this is just something that came online because of Faster, is that seventy, seventy percent technician direct labor rate. So this is an industry standard that was set that says seventy percent of the, the available billable hours that your technicians have, they are spending on direct maintenance and repair items. The indirect portion of that would be if an employee is on sick leave, planned vacation, clocked out for an appointment, those kind of things. So it just kind of contributes to an overall, how effectively are we managing the time that we have with the employees that we have towards the efforts of maintaining our fleet? Another one is just tracking the ratio of equipment to technicians. So currently, we're at a ninety to one ratio. That means for every one mechanic we have, they have over ninety pieces of equipment that they maintain. The industry standard for that, you can see the chart below, talks about different types of fleet makeups. It kind of averages out to the ideal ratio would be a seventy-five to one ratio. So as we continue to grow our fleet, we will continue to analyze both our technician direct labor rates, our effectiveness on managing our mechanics towards maintenance operations, as well as the ratio of mechanics to equipment. Getting into some of the challenges that we have, construction material prices have experienced, obviously, significant volatility. Although we have observed some reductions from recent spikes caused by supply chain disruptions during the pandemic, prices still remain elevated compared to previous levels and continue to fluctuate drastically. This poses challenges in forecasting the impact on our budget for the upcoming year, particularly in these areas. So we've seen increases on solvents, lubricants, fertilizers, you heard earlier from other departments, anywhere from seventy to three hundred percent above pre-pandemic rates. While those rates have come down, the swings are quite large throughout the year. So we use a lot of those items in our operational budget, and we have to budget accordingly to make sure that we can keep up with the market trends.
I have a quick question on that. Is there the ability to move projects around a little bit based on the price of materials either stabilizing or decreasing? Have you all considered whether or not we can shift things around within your overall kind of project schedule?
So we, we've done some of that, obviously, to, to some success, but some other areas, too, as we try to get ahead of the swings. If we see, you know, the, the barrel you see on here, I believe is a generic version of like a Roundup-type product. When those prices came down, we put in a larger order than we normally would. So instead of buying periodically throughout the year, once we noticed prices were advantageous to us, we would put in a larger order that would carry us longer through the year.
Perfect, thank you.
The current economic landscape represents some challenges for us in terms of labor costs and market competition. So despite a low unemployment rate, inflation is high, leading to increased wages in order to attract skilled workers. Private industry obviously has the ability to adjust wages more quickly, which makes it a challenge for the government to compete in attracting and retaining, retaining, excuse me, talent. Skilled trades in particular are in high demand, resulting in higher prevailing wages and open market. So one area, I'd like to give you an example on this. You see the top right of this slide talks about an average salary of a diesel mechanic in Florida is about twenty-five dollars an hour or fifty-two thousand a year. That is for the average diesel mechanic. A skilled diesel mechanic obviously will make more. For our operations, twenty-five dollars an hour is a mechanic three. So my ability to attract a highly skilled mechanic is very challenging, especially when dealerships are competing for the same pool of talent, mobile, mobile maintenance is, you know, competing as well. So really, what we look to is what sets us apart, what training opportunities can we provide? You know, we provide tools, whereas other organizations require mechanics to provide their own tools. So trying to, to focus in on some of those areas where we can have influence without the severe financial impact of just raising rates. Because of this, we've seen a increase in the amount of journeyman mechanics that we're bringing onboard, and we're trying to grow more of that talent in-house. That does create some challenges towards, you know, like our EVT fleet and some of those larger pieces of equipment that you'd really like to have more experienced mechanics onboarding.
Sure. Matt, does the Flagler Technical Institute, formerly FTC, are they providing any graduates that are, will fill any of, of the roles you're looking for?
We, we haven't seen any direct correlations with that. We, we have brought in, in the past, an apprentice for one of their programs. It wasn't related to mechanics, but that person had a interest in it, and he's now a full-time employee with us.
So I, I would just suggest when there's time that, yeah, you meet with them, and maybe they can alter their program to offer a skill set there that could transition to you, because you're right, you're competing with the private sector, but if you're, if you're competing for a homegrown local person, you might have a little bit of an advantage. So they can, I'm sure, modify their program if they were well aware. And I would also suggest you include the, the chamber probably in that conversation, and together talk about what their curriculum is and what your needs are.
Of course.
And on that as well, do we have any type of internship programs with any of the, our higher education or trade schools in the area?
So we don't have structured internship programs right now. We have brought in, on kind of an informal apprenticeship fashion, some temp help in the past, and then we're able to onboard those people if they had, you know, grown with the organization and we had a full-time position come open in the future, we could onboard them. That's how we ended up with a couple of our recent hires this last year. All right, and then just planning for the future, you can see this last year, we onboarded a fleet manager position to kind of take over that strategic oversight of our fleet operations. The Streets Division Maintenance Staff, we, we added a couple individuals there, and we began the transition of that solid waste contract into our department. We continue to work on that throughout this next fiscal year, and really, we look to right-size the addition of staff with the addition of infrastructure as we grow as a city. So if we bring on facilities, we bring on detailed median work, we bring on new roadways, we just want to pace ourselves correctly with that growth as well, so that we can maintain that level of service that's expected. Looking to the future, the last manager position that our department needs to kind of round out that level of oversight would be a facilities manager, as well as, depending on growth for future years, maybe a deputy director position. And then for FY twenty-six and beyond, we're really looking into that transition plan into the maintenance operations complex and the new fleet facility as the first phase in, in that process. And succession planning is highly important. Last year, we spoke to you about creating roadmaps so that each of our employees understood kind of the growth throughout their career with our department. We underlined that with training opportunities throughout the year, and, you know, we, we seek to continue to fund, to continue to fund those training opportunities. We have tweaked them a little bit this year, as we found out some more effective ways to, to get hands-on training through partnerships with different organizations that will come onsite for, like our facilities staff just underwent Level One HVAC training with looking at conducting Level Two for next year, which will allow them to conduct the PMs and to service the freon levels for the smaller units, not the commercial units like are in this facility, but some of our fire stations and, and other facilities. We're looking to onboard some of that work in the future to our own staff. And then with an eye towards the future, we're definitely excited about the progress and the future plans for the maintenance operations complex. And Ms. Bevan makes fun of me because my military background and my propensity for acronyms, I like to call it the MACH. Currently, we're in the planning and design phase of fleet maintenance, of the fleet maintenance facility, and city council has shown strong support for this project, and, you know, we're very thankful for that. We think that the fleet maintenance facility will definitely be a bolster to not only the safety of our staff within fleet and looking to the MACH for our entire staff in the future, but it'll also allow us to attract and retain some of that talent as well. All right, so I know that was quite the extensive briefing, but did anyone have any further questions for myself or Ms. Roscoe?
So I agree that the, the new facility will be a great recruiting tool, in addition to the career path that you are working into your succession planning and the training, because that's probably the only edge you're going to have over the private sector in terms of attracting folks here. So I'd love to, when we get closer to the MACH, see what kind of plans we have in place to use that as a, a component of, of recruitment. But going back to one of your, your early slides, which had to do with the mowing schedule?
Yes, sir.
You offered up a metric, which I understand, I think it was eighty plus, eighty-two percent, whatever, that you're achieving, a schedule, and I'm just curious, that schedule is determined how, and how long has that schedule been in place?
So two years ago, we began looking at what does right look like when it comes to our landscaping operations?
Uh-huh.
And that was about the same time that throughout the city, we were implementing KPIs. And we started with what, what are we doing today and does that look right? And we were a bit lagging, we knew that. There were areas that the grass got a little longer than we preferred between rotations. Litter obviously collected a little bit more than we would like between rotations. So we set a line in the sand and kind of challenged ourselves for no more than seven weeks on detail mowing and no more than eight in all other areas. And then we tried to figure out a way, how can we track this? Because we also didn't have that at the time. And our IT department with the GIS professionals there helped us to create that system.
So, and I appreciate that, and I appreciate your ability to monitor your, your metric. So I guess I'm going to the beginning, the standard. In other words, what is that standard? So for example, if city council were to be, to, to discuss in our workshop that you're trying to achieve better than eighty-five, perhaps, get wherever you can, but what if we lowered the standard to seventy-five, whatever that, that, in other words, so you're, you're lengthening your mowing schedule as one example?
Correct.
Now, what is the effect? What does that look like? Would our community's quality of life be significantly different? And where I'm really going with this is, so And where I'm really going with this is, so if those folks that perform that function had more time to fill potholes that we know are becoming more of an issue, I'm trying to trade off without reducing the beautiful look of the community, but I'm not convinced that that standard isn't artificially set or set by, you know, it's not set by science, it's set because somebody said, hey, that's about what the right height of the grass should be.
Correct. So it, it's kind of a concoction of, you know, what is right and I know it when I see it, as well as what is achievable with the resources that I have. So right now, I know that I can get, if I just used eight weeks as the flat standard, I know that I can successfully conduct an eight-week rotation throughout the growing season. That means this time of year when grass is growing really fast, that's already a bit excessive, just based on the amount of litter you see and the height of the grass during growing season.
So I guess what I'm really asking is?
Right.
Is city council willing to accept this, this bit of belt tightening in order to cure another issue, which is only going to become worse? I mean, the pothole issue, despite the, you know, the, the investment that we're making is going to continue to be a problem. So this is an example of, I guess, what belt tight, what belt tightening would, would cost in a variety of different ways. And I don't know, I'm, it's this workshop today, so we're just talking about it.
Right. So the most-
A priority is something we need to do. And while it's nice to look at really nice landscaping while driving, it's no fun hitting a pothole while doing it.
Right.
And I think we do have problems like potholes that we need to address first. So yeah, if we have to slack off here in order to do this, because you only, you have a certain amount of staff, you know, certain amount of hours in the day.
Right.
I think that's something we need to take-
What I, what I will say is, we're currently not even meeting the metric that we had set.
Right.
Which means this time of year, grass is going to be a little taller than, than, I don't want to say than we would like, but taller than it should be.
But that's, that's, that's the real word, should.
Correct.
Should by whose definition?
I would say by the complaints that we're going to receive from our citizens.
Okay.
If, if we reduce that standard, grass will then exceed the FDOT standards of acceptability on not only our own roadways, but the ones that we're contracted to maintain.
So are we complying with the, in other words, is our standard the DOT standard?
So we currently exceed the DOT standard, I would say, on all of our major parkways.
So I guess the question for city council would be, I'm not putting this on you, that we would have to decide, are we willing to accept the Department of Transportation of the State of Florida's standard as our standard? It's a question that we'll have to deal with. And then we also have to really understand, what does that look like? Because you don't want your residents, you know, screaming at you that they don't think that's sufficient or, or enough. I don't know the answer, but that's the kind of process that we have to think through.
And, and just for clarification, I would say, don't quote me on the number, but I believe the FDOT standard is 12 inches. So if grass is above 12 inches, I would get a notification from FDOT if that's on US-
So I'll tell you what, what, certainly I would offer, and I would hope each city council member as they can would offer. So a couple of drive-arounds, a field trip. So show us what it might look like if we were to discuss such an issue and we could decide, you know, it works or doesn't work. I mean, otherwise we can't, you know, I'd have to see it. And I know that we've talked about these drive-arounds, I think that would make good sense for city council members.
I would be very open to extending that invite to each one of you. And again, not just trying to defend my staff, but the longer we wait between these rotations, not just, not just grass higher, but-
I'm not pointing at staff. What I'm saying is you have inherited a standard, a benchmark. So what I'm doing is I'm questioning the benchmark.
Okay.
Is it, is it the correct benchmark for today's budget and for today's community going forward? That's what I'm asking, has nothing to do with, with staff.
Well, I think, I think more to the discussion of level of service. If you're currently not pleased with the, the amount of litter that we have on our roadways, that's affected by these rotations as well.
Right.
And then the grass will be taller as a secondary.
So, so my challenge is show me.
Yes, sir.
I have a question. Is the, is it harder on the equipment if you're waiting as well? I don't know. But is it harder on the equipment if you wait for the grass to grow longer as well?
Definitely it is. We obviously have some tow behind finished mowers and, and, you know, bush hog type equipment that goes behind a tractor for our rite of ways. Those can kind of handle that. When we get into decorative medians, we're, we're on residential, commercial slash residential mowers that are not designed to cut grass that's a foot tall.
And then as far as the schedule goes, when we're not in growing season, does the focus shift to fixing your potholes, you know, so that we're not stuck in this one way of thinking all year round?
That's a great question. So we have kind of an off-season to-do list that we gather throughout the year. We clean out each one of those bench bump outs throughout the city. You know, we're fixing potholes, we're doing edge of road repairs that, you know, we, we negate through that growing season a lot of times, just because of the amount of work that we have. Pothole repairs as well, those kind of things. And then as we get closer to springtime, we're doing kind of a spring cleanup to where we're mulching, we're cleaning up the beds throughout the city, because we know once growing season starts, pretty much all hands on deck throughout the rest of that season for mowing and edging operations.
One more question. Thank you, Matt.
Great. Great.
Thank you all.
Oh, I just wanted to comment. I know that the Department of Public Works does a great job and they work very hard to keep this city clean and looking beautiful. But I'd just like to back up a little bit on the problem with the litter here in Palm Coast. And I agree with all the council members that we do need to implement some programs that will help to decrease the amount of litter that is occurring in our city now. And with the population growth increasing, of course, we're going to begin to see more litter. So I think that instituting the more signage, instituting fines, and also are there any particular areas where we're finding that there is a larger amount of litter than in other areas? And where would you say they might be?
There's several locations around town, most that are, I hate to name names, but there's a certain stretch in our section that there are no residential homes and it's just a long stretch and we get instance of, hey, you know, the kids were out there again this weekend. So every weekend, we're going out and picking up soda bottles and soda bottles and other items. So that's, we do have a couple areas of that, but for the most part, it's, you know, either items that we can enforce, like debris flowing out of dumpsters and commercial building sites where we can affect change in that. Otherwise, unless we're visually seeing it and relaying that to an authority that has the ability to find them, then we're limited to, as you said, the signs and the education portion.
Okay. And what I would like to see is some kind of campaign set up where we could do the signage, where we could alert the community that we are trying to do something about the litter that's occurring here in Palm Coast. So thank you.
Thank you. All right, last comment before I let you go. City manager, when you can, could you share with each city council member whatever the current ordinances on the books regarding litter are, so that we could focus on that discussion? I'm concerned about how, you know, saying the word fine is easy, putting it into effect is a very, very different subject. So start us off with a copy of whatever we currently have on the books, so that we can discuss where we're at and then talk about where we might like to go.
Very, very, yes, sir.
Thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you.
And we'll move now to presentation number four, which is our Stormwater and Engineering Department overview. Mr. Cody?
Carl Cody, Director of Stormwater Engineering Department. Our department manages the rehabilitation and expansion of the city's infrastructure system, which is stormwater utility and roadways, which were put in during the initial development of Palm Coast that began in the seventies. We focus on keeping the operation of our infrastructure system by assessing and rehabilitating the aging infrastructure, but also expanding roadways and adding new elements such as parks, fire station, wells and pump stations to address our current and future growth. Our department is comprised of 73 full-time staff and there are four focused areas, stormwater, utilities, transportation, parks and facilities. The goals of our department are noted on the slide, but in summary include providing an enhanced quality of life for residents to collaborate and provide a well-maintained and functioning system by being fiscally responsible, as well as provide a high level of citizen engagement. Our mission is to ensure the protection of the environment, quality of life and public safety through maintenance, planning and improvements. The purpose of the stormwater staff is to provide superior flood protection for our residents and their property through maintenance, improvement and innovation. And the purpose of the engineering staff is to provide unsurpassed support and protection of our community through collaborative and technical methods to manage public safety and quality of life. Three main components to engineering is the oversight and implementation of the city's capital improvement program, performing technical reviews and new developments and permits and providing oversight and assistance regarding utility, stormwater and traffic operations. Engineering typically manages over 100 projects each year, utilizing various grants and funding sources. Our engineering staff face numerous challenges regarding workload, funding shortfalls, infrastructure needs, as well as staffing and succession planning. We have worked on succession planning, however, these technical positions are very difficult The stormwater operations staff work diligently to provide prompt and effective service to our customers, limiting downtime and maintaining a safe operating environment. They measure success using key performance indicators. The goal is to limit the amount of reactive work as much as possible by being aggressive in our proactive work. This entails completing preventative maintenance, condition assessments and scheduled downtime that minimizes impact to our city's day-to-day operations. The graph shows a drastic increase in permanent inspections over the past five years, which is performed by four staff members. This is an item that was included as part of the stormwater rate study analysis that was recently performed. This graph shows the number of stormwater cases created in fiscal year '22, the primary focus from citizen inquiries. Most of these cases are regarding the swale system. The enhanced program added staff to address this level of service item, however, due to the increased number of inspections and additional tasks, this was not achievable as inspections take precedence over stormwater cases. We do prioritize blockages and flooding over the centerline of roadway, which we address within 24 hours. Our current FY '23 cases are similar to FY '22, however, the number of cases can increase substantially due to major storm events. This is an item that was included as part of the stormwater rate study analysis as Of the 1,139 cases closed in FY '22, we're only able to respond to 50% of these cases within the three-week level of service goal. Our current fiscal year '23 case level is similar to fiscal year '22. This is an item that was also, you know, addressed in the rate study. So some of the challenges in operations areas regarding the major increase in the number of inspections to be performed and additional tasks exceed the manpower available, therefore resulting in a lower level of service and citizen response time. Recently adopted stormwater rate increase provides additional staffing and funding to address these challenges.
I'll start, Carl, just before we get too far, could you define for me what an inspection is?
An inspection, so our stormwater operations, they, they do a lot of inspections associated with new home construction and right-of-way permits. So a lot of times, they're doing inspections, either lot grading for our new home site, they're doing inspections for new driveways that are crossing the swales, they're inspecting the culvert, verifying that the inverts are set correctly before the driveway is poured. They're doing inspections if there's complaints on new home permits with swale blockages, whether dumpsters are in the swale, those sort of things.
Let me just ask a question, and maybe just because I don't understand, and maybe Mr. DiLorenzo is going to have to help me with this. Why wouldn't the expense of that inspection, I'm talking about labor, be rolled into the building department and the, the fees that we collect and hold to run that building department?
We do, last year, when the building department did their, their fee analysis, we used the same consultant and we actually charged a stormwater fee on the building permit to cover our costs of inspections in plane review. So we're again reimbursed for our time spent on building permit, plane review and inspections. It's not part of the rate. The rate, the rate study isn't accounting for our staff time associated with anything with a building permit.
So I guess what, in my mind, what I'm thinking is, so that, the building department, that, that reserve that we keep, it's significant, it's a big number. Why aren't we applying more of that so that we can upgrade our service level here? Because the service level is dismal. Inspection taking precedent over cases. Obviously, you'd like to see that, 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 that graph change so that you were more attentive to the case solutions. Why can't that happen with all that money that's sitting in the building reserve fund?
I can take it if you'd like.
Yeah.
It's regulated by state laws.
Okay.
Stormwater is not a function of, of the, of the building.
Even the inspection for the new construction?
Nope.
How can that be?
It's not included in the Florida Building Code.
Okay.
So the dollars collected for the building permit fee cannot be used and neither can the, the employees that are funded out of that, out of that fee cannot be used for this per state law.
Because it's not included or it's called out specifically, it can't be used for that?
It's, it's not a function of the Florida Building Code and the fees collected as part of a building permit are for the enforcement of the Florida Building Code.
Okay. So it's just-
Right. However, but what Carl did say is that the fees, there is a stormwater fee collected as part of the building permit, but the stormwater and engineering-
So is that something we should lobby for in Tallahassee to get that changed? Because certainly in my mind, that when you build a house here in Palm Coast that requires a swale and the inspection that goes along with it, I mean, that's part of the, that's part of the build. So is this something that we need to lobby for and just ask for a change in the code in Tallahassee to help us with that?
It's a possibility, but you're, that's-
We're currently getting the fee from the builders, it's just as a separate fee on the building permit. So all the time and costs for those staff are being reimbursed by the builder. The part that's not being paid by the builder is all the, the citizen inquiries about blockages in the swale.
Right, right.
So that's, that's where we're short and that's what the rate study would have paid for, is the staff time to address citizen complaints, because that's a whole, that's a separate topic.
So I guess where I'm going, that reimbursement is not affording you the opportunity to increase the number of personnel you have on the case side?
That is correct.
Why is that?
The, because they're, they're not related. They're not related to the Florida Building Code. So here, I'll try to break it down differently, right? So when we did our rate, our rate study, and Carl mentioned that stormwater was included with that rate study as well, and there was a significant increase on the building permit, right? To, to appropriately fee the new construction for the amount of work that was being done by stormwater and engineering staff related to new construction. And, but they're, they're completely disassociated with each other, right? Building permit fees are regulated by the state as an enterprise fund and, you know, those dollars have to stay with that work. I can give you another example, like zone, zoning review has to be completed for every new construction as well. And we charge a, you know, there's a, a collection on the building permit that is associated with admin, right? But that doesn't go to the building department, right? That goes to fund that relationship. Even though that is a function of new construction, it cannot be part of buildings' enterprise fund.
So are we charging enough to, to in fact, cover all of our costs and, and overhead as far as personnel goes for that specifically, for those permanent inspections?
Yes, our, our revenues have been exceeding our projections, so, but that's something that, as part of the fee study, we're, we're asked to look at annually.
Okay. I appreciate the explanation and I'm just, you know, intuitively. And, and the other problem we have is, so the city of Palm Coast, I think this is important for the public to understand, is- for the public to understand, is rather unique in its swale and ditch system. It's not prevalent throughout the state of Florida, so we're handicapped and handstrapped a little bit with having to continue using this process within the, the original ITT template for Palm Coast. So that's probably why the state wouldn't care very much about our, our ask to redefine the code, because it's not going to affect large parts of Florida. Okay, all right, thank you. All right, go ahead, I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
Nope, that's quite all right. So moving on to our stormwater maintenance, you know, based on experience, residents that, you know, they think of stormwater system, they think of the swale in front of their home. However, the reality is our, our system is massive, and the function of the system, you know, includes elements that are downstream of the swales, you know, and it takes, you know, a small army of people and equipment to keep the system maintained and functioning. You know, with over twelve-hundred miles of swales, we have two crews who grade an average of more than thirty miles per year. You know, the photo shows the staffing and equipment that are dedicated to the swale rehabilitation and maintenance program. The swale crews, you know, just some photos of them in action and some of the various activities they perform, such as grading, maintenance of traffic, sod, irrigation, public outreach, and other operations that are necessary. Sometimes the swales are fine, but the pipes under the driveways are full of sediment. This is actually, you know, the homeowner's responsibility to maintain and keep clean. However, the pipes over time fill up with sediment that requires specialized equipment to take care of, of these issues.
So let's just clarify that for the public once and for all. So the public owns and is responsible for that pipe?
For the pipe, the driveway, everything?
However, the city does step in to help, because we have equipment, we have expertise, when it becomes untenable for the homeowner to manage it on their own.
Correct. As part of our education process, you know, we do educate citizens on things they can do to help alleviate some of these issues, you know, such as not edging along the edge of the driveway, such as, you know, doing that annual spring and fall, kind of shoveling out then in the culverts. We've, we've done some videos, some Q and A's, so we do have lots of educational opportunities out there, but they do over time will fill up, you know, that sediment does make its way down and get into those swales. So it's more than a resident can handle, and we need specialized equipment to do it. So work orders to generate swale maintenance are created from some of the Palm Coast Connect cases that were received from citizens. As part of the enhanced program, you know, digital tracking of citizen inquiries was created so that staff and citizens can look up their addresses to see the current area of where the crews are working and the actual streets where work is being performed, and to see the crew's future work areas and upcoming streets, which are identified to be covered in the next rotation. The two crews spend two months in each work area. With the implementation of some additional staffing and additional equipment, the backlog of work orders has been dropping over the past few years. You can see that in the chart. As you saw in the previous slide, our goal is to remove the backlog of work orders. Depending on our resource allocations over the next five to ten years, we would like to complete the transition from a reactive operation to a preventative and eventually a predictably based operation. A predictive operation would utilize collected data and condition assessments provided by staff in their interactions and inspections of our assets to selectively perform preventative maintenance only when it is deemed necessary for our individual use cases. We have met our target of exceeding closed cases over new cases by one hundred or more for the past two fiscal years. Even with the rise in residential construction and storm events, which are the leading cause of new work orders, these have been dropping as our efforts to improve the function of the stormwater system downstream in our canals and ditches has alleviated issues with our swales. Prior to the enhanced program in 2018, our level of maintenance for the hundred-and-seventy-seven miles of ditches throughout the city was simply to mow the tall grass primarily with the use of prison crews. Under our new program, you know, in 2018, a ditch crew is added with specialized equipment who are dedicated to excavating ditches to restore them to the original design and capacity. The photo shows the staffing and equipment that are dedicated to ditch rehabilitation and maintenance. We still utilize prison crews to do the mowing and debris removal, and recently added herbicide treatments to further help retard vegetative growth. These efforts have had a very positive impact in the overall function of the system. To further enhance these positive impacts, addition of a second ditch crew was included as part of the rate study update analysis. The intent is that the second ditch crew will be working in tandem with the two swale crews so they can address the immediate downstream ditch improvements at the same time as the swale rehab. This ditch crew performs a variety of tasks utilizing a variety of equipment, including specialized equipment. Work includes clearing, grading, re-establishing the ditches to original conditions, or modifications to expand ditch capacity per engineering analysis. With over three thousand pipes that are part of the stormwater system, the pipe crew typically replaces around fifty each year. A pipe crew is out repairing or replacing the aging infrastructure daily. By having city staff performing this work, we can, we are proactive in finding and fixing issues before they become larger problems. It also allows us to make any repairs quickly instead of having to wait for a contractor. Issues are now addressed in days, not weeks or months, and the biggest challenge they face is to stay ahead of pipe failures. Each year, emergency failures continue to increase, so, you know, we had lots of major recent, major failures on rural Palms, White View, Belt Air, Seminole Woods. And performing this work in-house, you know, is a cost savings in lieu of contracting out the work. As part of the pipe replacement programs, we utilize contractors to perform concrete and asphalt work, which was part of that stormwater rate analysis. Pipe crew performs a variety of projects ranging from the replacement of a twenty-four-inch pipe on a residential roadway to replacement of forty-eight-inch pipe or larger pipes on the major roadways, as well as replacement or modification of stormwater structures, concrete spillways, and headwells. In addition, they install new larger pipes to replace existing or install new pipes as part of a stormwater improvement project. Coordination with various utilities and maintenance of traffic is critical for the work they perform. In summary, the major challenges we are facing in the stormwater maintenance area is the rise in cost of materials and the contracted work cost increases. Staff turnover and our aging infrastructure is failing faster than we can rehabilitate and repair. In the graph, you can see the cost for some items have more than doubled in the past two years. The recently adopted rate increase addresses these challenges and includes adding a second ditch crew, a freshwater canal crew, a concrete asphalt crew, staffing, and their associated equipment. Now, we, we have reviewed and updated career progression roadmaps for all positions in the department and created areas of opportunity for staff, and have created individualized development plans identifying training with ability for advancement. Many of the proposed staffing additions, you can see this is, in twenty-three, there are various items that were added in engineering and in stormwater operations and maintenance as part of that overall plan. Those items are listed on the sheet. Many of the proposed staffing for fiscal year twenty-four in, in, in our five-year plan are related to the recent stormwater rate study update that was completed. However, an annual review will be completed as part of the annual budget update to analyze this and revisit it on a annual basis. Staffing needs are continued to be evaluated to address regulatory, resiliency, organizational changes, succession planning, workload, efficiency, and level of service, as well as to support, you know, our future maintenance operations complex. So that summarizes overview and challenges our department faces and kind of where we are today and where we're going in the future. Here for any questions you may have.
Good, good presentation, Carl, thank you. Questions about stormwater in particular, we kind of handled this at a prior meeting to a great extent.
I have no further questions.
I mean, I'm, I'm, the, the cost increases and the, the age of the infrastructure are extremely difficult to, to digest, you know, through this budget process. You know, when we talk about, you know, wants and needs, I mean, obviously, this is a need that doesn't go away.
I don't have anything further, thank you. And I agree with you, Mayor, obviously, but I think we, I think we've made the right decision to address that.
Yeah.
No question.
Carl, thank you for your presentation. And we'll listen to our final presentation today, which will be the Utility Department Overview.
Good morning, Mayor.
Flanagan, as you are ready.
Good morning, Mayor, City Council. Stephen Flanagan, your utility director, for the record. Today, we will go through the Utility Department Overview and Challenges. For the agenda, in this PowerPoint, we will discuss several topics such as utility purpose and history, safe and reliable services, data-driven metrics, growth data, plant capacity expansion, cost escalations, personnel challenges, and succession planning. Our purpose, the purpose of the Utility Department is to provide the highest quality water and wastewater services that meet the present and future environmental health and safety welfare of the community. Our mission, water is life, Palm Coast water is quality life. Our vision, to be a model of excellence in the water and wastewater field while protecting natural resources through long-term sustainability by leading and encouraging environmental stewardship. Our values, safety, stewardship, customer care, quality services, and a valued workforce. Some of our milestones in our history. In nineteen-seventy, started providing water and wastewater services. Nineteen-seventy-seven, we expanded wastewater treatment plant to eight-hundred thousand gallons a day. In nineteen-seventy-nine, we constructed our first true water plant facility at two million gallons a day. Nineteen-ninety, wastewater treatment plant number one was expanded to two-point-six-million gallons a day. Ninety-two, water plant number two is constructed and goes online at two million gallons a day. Nineteen-ninety-nine, ITT sells the system to Florida Water Services. Two thousand and three, the city of Palm Coast purchases the utility assets. Two thousand and four, water treatment plant number two is expanded to six-point-three-eight million gallons a day. Two thousand and eight, water plant number three is constructed as a three-million gallon a day facility, upgradable to nine million in future. Two thousand and fifteen, water treatment plant number two upgrades to zero liquid discharge and increases the capacity to seven-point-five-eight million gallons a day. And in twenty-eighteen, wastewater treatment plant two is brought online at two million gallons a day, expandable, or planned to be expandable, to up to six million gallons a day.
Steve, do you know, is the city still paying down that eighty-three-million-dollar purchase, or are we done with that?
I believe we're still paying that down.
Okay.
Unless Elena nods differently.
I got a nod in the back, okay, yeah.
We're still paying that original down. Now, it's, it's been redone before, but we're still paying it down. To provide an idea of the magnitude of our utility infrastructure, this slide shows some of the highlights of the system beyond the treatment plant facilities. We have sixty-seven wells, six storage tanks totaling seven-and-a-half million gallons of total possible storage, over eight-hundred-and-thirty miles of water mains, over fifty-six-thousand revenue water meters, one-hundred-and-sixty-five wastewater pump stations, and over seven-hundred miles of sewer lines. Here we have a little cost comparison. Bottled water can cost roughly five-hundred times more than tap water. Most municipal water costs less than one cent per gallon, while a bottle, bottle of water typically costs over a dollar for thirty-two ounces. One of the other highlights here is tap water is also far better for the environment than bottled water, reducing plastic waste for one. In order to provide safe and reliable services, the city of Palm Coast Utility Department performs these type of preventative measures. We smoke test gravity sewer pipelines to check for inflow potential, to reduce stormwater in the system, basically. We check pump stations routinely to assure operational integrity. We line gravity sewer piping and manholes to reduce infiltration and keep the ground service integrity in order. We inspect gravity sewer lines via closed-circuit television to identify problems before they become major problems. And we routinely check water quality in the system and flush to maintain a safe drinking water supply. We exercise existing system valves to better assure they will function properly when needed to isolate portions of the pipeline. We test backflow preventers to confirm individual customers are protected from possible contamination from others. Pumping staff have changed out some of the impellers seen on the upper-right-hand photo on existing pumps. These impellers have shown a reduced electrical consumption along with handling rags and debris without clogging more successfully, and also reducing callouts on overtime. Staff have also replaced capacitor banks in the pump control panels with variable frequency drives. These drives allow for softer starting of the pumps and reduce electrical consumption as well. They are much safer for staff to work on also. This is an example of the amount of work wastewater collection receives over the course of six months. Some work, of course, is minor, and some can be very intense. The picture at the left is a hole forming in the roadway near sewer manhole. In this case, a repair needed to be made to the sewer system, and then the road could be re-established. Our construction division installs PEP tanks along with two vendors we utilize to aid staff in keeping up with the growth of the community. Our two vendors installed roughly five-hundred-and-fifty-one units, and our in-house staff installed one-hundred-and-one units in the first seven months of the fiscal year. As you see in the slide, installations have increased every year for several years. In this chart, you will see the total number of new PEP tanks installed each month for the last sixteen months. The green line represents total tanks installed. The gray line shows contractor-installed tanks, and the yellow line shows the tanks installed by our in-house staff. We continue to grow at a fairly brisk pace with higher-level meter installs every year for several years. This fiscal year might be our first year that we don't exceed the prior year in recent history. We utilize a local contractor to support our staff with these installs. The local contractor installed four-hundred-and-fifty-one, and our in-house crews installed six-hundred-and-twenty-three in the first seven months of the fiscal year. This use of contractors to assist staff is very beneficial because in case of a downturn in growth, this allows us to simply cut back on contractor usage to reduce costs. In this chart, you will see the total water meters installed each month in the blue line, excuse me, units installed by in-house staff in the yellow line, and units installed by contractors in the green line. On a monthly basis, anywhere from eighty-five to almost two-hundred-and-thirty meters have been installed as growth continues. As we grow, treatment capacity becomes more and more important. We are currently under construction with a capacity construction upgrade at wastewater treatment plant number two, pictured in the center of the slide. Plant two is currently rated at two million gallons a day, and we will be doubling it to four million gallons a day upon completion next spring. Wastewater treatment plant number one is in the preliminary engineering phase of an upgrade from six-point-eight-three million gallons a day to nine-point-one million gallons a day most likely. Water plant number three is in the planning stage of an upgrade at this time. Water plant number three is in the planning stage of an upgrade at this time. In this slide, we are showing the increased cost of chemicals for water and wastewater treatment. Unfortunately, chemicals have gone up at even a much greater rate than the remainder of the economy. As you can see in this slide, many of the chemicals have increased by 65 to over 100% in a two-year span. In this slide, we show some of the common materials we use every day in the utility to give an idea of the inflation impact that it is causing the utility expenses. Wastewater pumps have increased from 10 to 35%, for example. Electrical wire costs have come back down a little bit from their height. Water meter install material is up about 12 to 15% on average, and that's where a lot of our costs actually are during this growth period. Personnel staffing retention. Turnover is one of the most disruptive challenges the utility can face. In training, when new staff come aboard, there's a learning curve that occurs before they become effective field technicians. When we have high turnover rates, the training value is lost. Recruiting of new staff has become a challenge based on the ability of the private sector to increase their proposed pay rates at a quicker level than government entities can afford to adjust to. These are all still appropriate messages, but I will tell you, these points are still valid. The good news is the situation is better than it was last year, a fair amount better. Our plant operators are still one of our hardest positions to fill, but we are now doing a training program ourselves to train locals, and that has shown real benefits. And we're hoping that they tend to stay longer once they kind of have roots here as well.
Well, one other thing, too, I think, we talk about how difficult it is to acquire new staff. One advantage I think we do offer, we offer really good benefits to our employees. And most of those benefits are better than they're going to find in the private sector. So I think that's something we need to push on folks when we are recruiting them. You know, yeah, this guy may give you a couple dollars more an hour, but look at the benefits you're getting from this city, because we do have great benefits.
Vice Mayor, I sell that a lot, even to our own staff.
Yeah.
So that they appreciate those benefits, because it's not just the dollar you make.
Right. It's what you're going to have at the end of the day when you retire, and what you're going to get in between there, days off, bonuses, you know, all sorts of things, medical, you know, the whole nine yards. We have an excellent package.
We do. Agreed. Succession planning. So in fiscal year 23, we filled a meter foreman position. We filled the wastewater collection manager position. We created a utility dispatcher to improve wastewater collections and pep call efficiency. And in '24, we're going to move towards adding an inventory clerk. In fiscal year '24 to '25, we're proposing an assistant manager position, add a staff assistant for admin support, create a development manager position, continue to provide training of key staff in preparation for key staff member retirements, and monitor expected levels of service. Out to fiscal year '25 and '26, we will continue to identify positional needs within the department, use smart growth plans, focus on developing individuals to meet future utility operational needs. And then in fiscal year '26 to '27, we will identify treatment facility operational needs in relationship to growth patterns as they move forward, review organizational needs of all divisions, continue to support future operational joint facility plan and its impact on the utility functions and staffing. Our staff is proud to provide high-quality water and wastewater services to the community while reinforcing our mission of water is life, Palm Coast water is a quality life. We thank the city council for your support of our operation and service to the community. Be glad to take any questions you might have.
Steve, if I can, just again, this is a workshop, so let me just get this out. So built into some of your presentation was the flexibility that outsourcing to subcontractors provides. And I certainly understand that if your economy is fluctuating, you can, you know, turn the switch and not be on the hook with more staff than you would need. It's my understanding and my impression that despite the fluctuations in the national economy, that the state of Florida, the northeast region of Florida, and specifically Palm Coast are not forecasting any downturn, certainly not in growth in the foreseeable future. My question is this, it's been my experience that subcontracting does come at some premium of cost. Just want to make sure that we're not being overly conservative and paying more than we should knowing that we're not expecting a downturn in our local infrastructure growth. So can you respond to that?
Yes. I've actually found it to be a very positive thing, Mayor, in utilizing these contractors. Most of them, one, live and work in our community.
Okay.
So they benefit our community that way. We also come to find that we utilize these same contractors for some of our emergency repairs.
Okay.
So when, at this time, you know, it would be great to have more resources and more personnel, like you're saying, somewhat. That said, our personnel right now is working at a high rate on an hourly week, if you will. There's a fair amount of overtime that goes in just based on hits and repairs, the aging of the system. I'll give you one example of something that occurs over time. As our system is aging over time, we don't think about it, but we all have service lines in our house. I don't know if any of y'all have ever had a problem with one of your service lines failing, but I have twice in my life here just in Palm Coast. But I will tell you, our old service lines that are installed for a water service, for example, so the main line that's out in the roadway is now connected, right? And we can actually tap that main without shutting anything down, and then we run a new piping to the house. The old piping is polybutylene, okay? Those are starting to fail now at a higher and higher rate. We replace them with new product now that's polyethylene that has a longer life expectancy. But more and more of that's going to start happening. So our staff are doing those kind of functions. They're testing and repairing backflow preventers. They're getting called out on breaks when contractors are out there installing new ATT or fiber optic systems. And then they're also installing meters and pep tanks and all those kinds of things.
Okay. I appreciate that. And I guess, so hopefully, your subcontractors represent a recruitment tool as well that you could convince some of those folks to come over to the right side.
We just hope they don't steal too many of ours when it comes down to it. But it is a very beneficial, we have seen it to be very beneficial.
Questions from city council? I think a very, very good presentation.
If there's anyone here who's not visited our water treatment plants, please go visit them because they're pretty impressive.
And to your point, Vice Mayor, also, for the public, I mean, we're starting to hear this more and more, so let's just put it out there on the record that your department, Steve, is well aware of the growth component, and concurrency is something that you are required to conform to, meaning that as we grow, your facilities grow to ensure that we have the service, the water, all of the essential things that you provide. So there's no chance that the city will grow faster than your plants can also grow as well. I just want you to confirm that for me, for the public's benefit.
And we want to do our best to make sure we don't hinder that growth process.
Right. Very good. Okay. Thank you.
We spoke in the presentation about three of the treatment facilities that are under some stage of expansion potential. But, you know, things that didn't really come up in this presentation is our well field is a major component to the operation of our system.
That's a really good point, and also, because so many of our folks are relocating from other parts of the country, in northeast primarily. So we are forced, because of where we live, to literally suck our water through straws out of the ground, which is a very, very expensive process. Folks that live in other parts of the country enjoy water availability through other resources and ways, but that's not the way we do it. We literally pull it out through straws in the ground. So that is important for residents who are, you know, coming to the community to understand. It's just a fact of life here.
And we look forward to working alongside our developers to West Palm Coast on how the well field will expand out that way, how utility lines will expand out that way, how reclaimed water and disposal will work throughout that area. So we look forward to all of that.
Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you, Council.
That brings us to the end of our presentations for today. So I would ask if there are any members of the public that would like to make public comment on, you know, any issue, you know, not previously covered in today's agenda, I would invite you to the podium at this time. I see one of our youngest members of the community enjoyed a good bit of our meeting today, so appreciate his attendance.
A very well behaved.
Yes, please. Yeah, well, I'm delighted that you're coming forward. Yes.
Yep. One of the youngest members of Palm Coast right here, Eliana.
Eliana, okay.
I wanted to come here and thank all of you, and all of you, three years ago moved here from Orlando, Florida. Thank you Flagler County Sheriff for keeping this place unbelievably safe compared to what we came from. She is one of four that we have. Wadsworth Elementary, Middle, and Buddy Taylor, our kids go there, and we're very pleased with what they do. I do like, one point that I heard today was, if people want to pay more taxes, they can live in another community. I think that's what you said today. And I wanted to kind of show you who you're here for. I've heard people say members of Palm Coast, residents of Palm Coast. It's the people of Palm Coast. And we entrust all of you to take care of us. And when I hear things like tax increases, and then I see a PowerPoint presentation as to why that's justified and why that needs to be done, you start to understand a little bit more. But I am seeing a disconnect between the community and everyone else here. What did we end up with, three of us in total? There's more city council members than there are residents. And it's my goal to change that. I started a Facebook group while I was sitting here called People of Palm Coast. I'd like to see it grow, and I'd like to see you guys join it so that we can talk about these things and get it really out there in the community. For her sake, I'd hate to see a $500 fee associated with her utility bill when the time she's my age here in Palm Coast. So when you're voting for tax increases, please make sure that they are truly needed. When I hear a gentleman from the department talking about that we need better mechanics, and the reason is we can't attract them because we don't pay them enough, but then we go ahead and buy a whole bunch of new Ford F-150s for everybody, I think there's something wrong there. I think if we could attract really great people that are here in this community to stay as a diesel mechanic and fix these things, well, maybe our projected life of all these amazing expensive service vehicles that we have in the city, well, we could expand that life and help with the budget just a little bit more. So I care about this community. I moved my whole family here, and I'm very, very proud to be here. By the way, the water, we drink Palm Coast finest every single day. Where's the water guy? There he is. Thank you very much. We drink that every single day. It's fantastic. So beautiful community, wonderful city. If you don't know, you're on the board of one of the most beautiful cities in Florida and safest. So you guys have an amazing day.
We thank you. Just two things. I apologize. I didn't ask you to identify yourself for the record.
Yep, Robert Skiffington.
And I would also invite you, if you would, to introduce yourself to our public, our communications department. So if you're working in the social media area, she may be a valuable resource for both of you.
I think that'd be great. Thank you so much. You guys have a wonderful day.
Thank you.
Are there any other members of the public that would like to address city council at this time? Seeing no one approach, we'll close the public comments section of today's agenda and bring it back to city council. Are there any members of city council that would like to conclude with any comments today?
I will just state for the record that I, too, drink our city water. There's no, it's great. It tastes fine. And you don't need to go buy a bunch of plastic bottles and throw them out onto the side of the road. Our water tastes great. They do a great job out there. That's all I have.
Councilperson?
Just very quickly, again, thank you to the staff for the presentations. Ms. Eliana was very well behaved. I was very impressed the entire time. And I just want to wish everybody a very blessed and safe Memorial Day, Memorial Day weekend.
Councilperson?
I would just like to thank everyone for their presentation, and I am looking forward to moving forward into the next few years with the city of Palm Coast.
And I would just conclude, Touch a Truck event is...
Touch a Truck is this Saturday. Brittany is not incorrect.
I would invite all of the community to come out, and there's going to be a special, special challenge. It's my understanding that the fire department and the sheriff's office may actually form some form of competition. So you'll have to come out and see what that might represent. But I don't know who the winner might be, but I'm sure it'll be an energizing experience. So please come out to Touch a Truck. City manager, any final comments for today?
Just a brief comment. You may have seen a row of young professionals in the back of the room this morning, and they really did try to stay for the whole meeting. But that's our interns that are joining our organization this summer. So they're energized, they have projects, they're working cross-organization, so you'll see them again.
Thank you. So with that, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion, and I have a second. All in favor, please. Aye. Aye, we are adjourned. Thank you all very much.